I'd like to call to order the May 22nd, 2018 Bristol, Virginia City Council. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Please stand for it. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started with a few comments. Tonight's going to be a busy night. I expect a fairly long night, lots of discussion, lots of questions, lots of things to consider. First reading of the budgets tonight, so this is an important step in getting the budget approved. So with that said, I want to just remind people, when you want to speak at any of the public comments or any of the agenda items, make sure you've signed the list. And when you get up, make sure you state your name, address, location in the city. And I just want to go up front and say, we are going to give Superintendent of Schools some time before public comment on the first reading. I will turn the clock off, give him the respect of giving some information to council. So that was by our request, so we're going to do that first before we get into public comment. So with that said, any other council comments? Okay, C Manager.
As you just stated, tonight is a very important night for the city. It's their first reading of the budget ordinance, and I can tell you, city staff has worked on this for an extremely long period of time, really since about mid-January of getting this budget together. And we're excited to get to this point this year as quickly as we have. I think it's been a lot of work with city staff and with council. Everyone's been extremely involved in this process. And with that being said, we can just go on to the first item on the agenda.
All right, regular agenda item number one, consider first reading of budget ordinance for fiscal year 2018-2019. Staff report.
Counsel, this proposed budget was presented to you on April 24th of 2018. A public hearing on the proposed budget was held on May 8th of 2018, which was advertised on April 29th, April 30th, and May 1st, 2018. Budget work sessions were held on May 12th and May 15th of 2018. I would recommend a first reading of the budget ordinance as presented, and a second reading of the budget ordinance is scheduled for June 12th. And my clicker. I'll give you a quick update on where we're at. These are the changes that have been made since, that were made on last Tuesday. A 1% bonus for city staff that does not include constitutional offices or the social services. That's a total cost of $92,026. We will move a portion of the overtime throughout the city to the contingency fund, which is $121,900. We will also reduce a portion of the city attorney budget line item and move it to contingency, which is $75,000. In regards to the tourism promotion program, Discover Bristol, also known as CVB, was reduced by $50,000. Believe in Bristol had $20,000 added to their line item, which was a net to the contingency of $30,000. We're also adding a part-time code compliance position, which is $21,530. And we moved $100,000 from inmate housing to the maintenance of buildings and property. Also, a bonus for solid waste, which comes out of the solid waste disposal fund, was So at this point, there's $173,404 in the contingency fund for this upcoming year. With that being said, as we try to get a handle on overtime within the city, $121,900 of that is going to be reserved for overtime. You can see, the starting balance was $60,060. We added $75,000. General fund bonuses came out of this contingency fund. Then you had the overtime allocation. The tourism promotion program was $30,000, and a code compliance position came out, which leaves us with that balance of $173,404. Our budget timeline, the second reading of the budget ordinance is scheduled for June 12th at 6:00 PM. Due to that being the primary election, our meeting will be held at the school board office on that night. Any other questions?
Questions from council for C Manager.
That bonus figure included the FICA match?
It did.
I just wanted to say, before we get into public comments, get Randy to comment on a couple of things. One, when the budget was put together and structured, you've got to understand, we were, we were very conservative with the top line revenues. We said, we said a couple of things. We cannot assume we're going to get revenues that haven't already come to bear that's in the account. So a lot of people have mentioned, well, why don't we assume that other businesses are going to open? We can't make those assumptions. We're not in a position to make those assumptions. A business wouldn't make those assumptions, and we're definitely not in a position to do that. So we had to be very conservative with our, with our revenue projections. Let's just hope that those things do happen, so that we don't have to do that assumption in the future. But we've got to be very careful what we assume, because there is risk in the top line. And so when you see some of the things we've done, some of the questions we've asked, some of the tough things we're asking people to do, the city's in a position where it's got to be, again, very careful what it does financially. We have, we have, we have very little maneuvering room on the financial board. We've got to be very strategic, very careful how we step. So yeah, everybody in this community, everybody in the departments of the city is going to have to feel some pain. That's, that's just kind of where we are as a city, unfortunately. It's not something we can't get out of, but it is, it is where we are. So I don't know if anybody's looked at the budget financials in detail of the city, but if you'd go look at them and really study them from several years back to today, you'd be scratching your head what really got us to this point in time. You really would. It's very alarming how things kind of added up on top of each other. But with that said, we've done a few things strategically to get the city in a better place. One was the refinancing. We had to buy the city some time. So we refinanced a very low interest rate. Timing was right. We got a very good rate. The rating agencies upped our credit rating, so that allowed us to get a good rate, so that put at least some of the current debt load, not right in front of us, but a few years out. And so those few years are critical. Those few years are very critical. So any, anything we do, timing is, timing is as important as what we do. What we do is important, how we do it, how much money we spend, but when we do it is also important. And so I just want everybody to understand, as we go through this, I challenge you to, to listen intently and really study the numbers, because that's the way the decisions are being made. We're not making these, I guess, we're not making these without a lot of consideration. And we understand the impact of some of these decisions, but our job at the end of the day, this council's job, is to make sure we put the city as a whole in a good position when we look down the road, and that's what we're trying to do. So, C Manager, you want to comment any further at all?
No, I think you summed it up exactly right in regards to how we've considered our revenue projections and our expense projections. You do not want to overestimate your revenues and underestimate your expenses. And based upon a historical analysis of past revenues and past expenses, I believe the budget that's been presented is probably, I don't want to say it's more, it's a realistic budget, in my opinion. I don't want to say it's any better or any worse than previous budgets, but based on the historical analysis of what is really spent and what is actually brought into the city via revenue, it appears this budget would support the historical analysis that we have done.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we'll get started on the item one, then consider first reading of the budget. We've had the staff report, so now Mr. Perry, do you want to come up and give us some input?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Members of City Council. Let me first say, let me commend you for making it a priority to take care of your staff with the 1% bonus, whether you're in governmental business, private, small business, large business, whatever, the best thing that you can do to ensure that you have a great workforce is to take care of your employees. So I commend you for that and challenge you to continue to look at ways to make that permanent as part of a raise for, for your city employees. I would also like to thank you for providing me with this opportunity to advocate for our schools and our staff and our students. Outside of providing some introductory context, my intent is to share new information with you tonight. The good news is that there's only one more scheduled meeting to discuss the city's budget, so the number of times you will hear our concerns is limited. However, I do sincerely appreciate the courtesy of you of providing additional time to me tonight, and out of, out of respect for that, I think I've got my comments down from this point to under six minutes, so.
You've got plenty of time.
I appreciate that.
Take your time.
I do appreciate it. So, Mr. Mayor, you continually said that this budget is not final until it's final, and I hope that that is truly the case. As our economy on a national, state, and local level is constantly in flux, it only makes sense that this budget continues to be a working document. Council will hear later tonight, new information that even in the last few days, significant events have occurred in Bristol that warrant a review of the current budget plan for 2018-19. First, though, let me provide some context. For the current year, 2017-18, our city appropriation is $7,233,210. On March 19th, our school board approved a budget that reduced that amount by $247,200 for this year's request. I've not conducted an exhaustive, exhaustive search on this, but I would propose to you that very few, if any, school divisions across the Commonwealth made a request for less money this spring than they did the previous year. Regardless, on March 22nd, I presented our reasonable budget request to council in a format approved by the mayor, although I had to do so in a very limited timeframe. At that time, I shared with council that we had, we had received an increase in state funding, were anticipating a decrease in Medicaid reimbursements, that we were trying to make our teachers' pay more competitive regionally and across the state, and that our budget was not fully balanced. I believe then, and I believe now, that our request of $6,986,010 was reasonable and team-oriented, as was our return of $75,000 the previous year. That leads into the topic of potential, a potential state funding increase. A majority of state dollars are fully, or at least partially restricted, and let me explain that. For state dollars listed in the grant offset category in the documentation that Mr. Eads provided you earlier, we must spend dollar for dollar what the state provides. So an example is that the state gives us, in the, in the, this upcoming budget, they were providing $45,636 for algebra readiness, and we must use exactly $45,636 on algebra readiness. And that is in the grant offset categories that you see in the documentation that I've provided. However, in the SOQ, Standards of Quality category, we are partially restricted. Here's an example of how that works. We receive $72,131 for guidance counselors and $317,240 for first grade teachers across, and that's based on prevailing averages. We have the flexibility in those SOQ funding categories to use part of that $317,000 for first grade teachers to offset the cost of guidance counselors, who may potentially be higher on the pay scale and therefore exceed that $72,000 mark. So we can move money inside the SOQ funded category, where we can't do that in the grant offset. So we, the money has to stay in those SOQ funds, but it can be moved between the categories inside the fund. So even though we may have additional state money, once the budget is approved, which we don't have an official state budget as of this time, but once it's approved, we are going to be somewhat restricted in how we spend that potential increase. If council offsets that potential increase with a local decrease, our reductions will have to come from locally funded items, because they're more flexible in nature. So, along those same lines, I need to clear up some other misconceptions that were discussed a couple Saturdays ago in your work session, that include tuition students and elementary school performance. Allowing students that live outside of the city limits to attend our schools actually generates a significant amount of revenue. Those students are not using our transportation. We don't need any additional staff to accommodate them. We heat the rooms, whether there's 18 students in the room or 16 students in the room, so the revenue for ADM, Average Daily Membership, that comes from, comes from the state regardless of what the student's address is. So to increase tuition for those students that live outside the city limits, in a worst-case scenario, could actually cost us $377,000 in state revenue, when it's not costing us an additional penny to educate those students. And additionally, in regards to school performance, I will tell you that our highest performing elementary school and our most improved elementary school, as measured solely by standardized testing, this year are Washington Lee and Highland View, respectively, despite the challenges that those buildings and staff face on a daily basis. So, I hope that information provides at least a better context for how I think we've arrived at this particular moment in time. But my real reason for being here tonight is to advocate again for council to fully fund our reasonable local appropriation request that is actually less than this year's city appropriation. Last Tuesday, consensus was made that our appropriation would remain at $6,686,010. However, on Wednesday, new information surfaced that leads me to ask you to reconsider that consensus. You will hear later tonight, the specifics of a very promising financial report, which was presented to the Finance Committee on Wednesday. In that report, you will hear that revenues overall are trending better than projected. You'll also hear that the current cash balance is significant and better than anticipated. And on top of that, here's what the kicker is. It was also reported that a very significant amount of delinquent tax payments were unexpectedly collected recently. Since the Treasurer's Office has already met their collection goals for the year, and it's only May, that means a significant amount of money, several hundred thousand dollars, is now available that was not available last week, when consensus was reached. When you factor all of those bits of information together, I believe that our schools deserve for council to take another look at the entire budget picture and make the forward-thinking decision to fully fund our reasonable appropriation request in order to fully maximize the city's future potential. In order to provide an opportunity to make the best decision possible, I respectfully request that, at the least, you table the vote on the budget ordinance until after the city manager provides the quarterly financial report later this evening. Preferably, I would also respectfully request that after the report is given, that you vote no on this budget ordinance and create a new ordinance that includes the full $6.9 million that the school system has requested. Again, thank you for allowing me that additional time.
We've got some questions, if you don't mind standing up there.
Yes, sir.
To clear some stuff. So you went over a lot of stuff there. I appreciate the, the new information. So let's, um, let's kind of slow down a little bit, because we want everybody to understand what the numbers you went through. So, you know, the total budget, you just, you touched on that, right?
Yes, sir.
You gave this at one of the council meetings. So last year was $26.66 million, $26.7 million. This year, the total budget's $27.25. So it's up $592,000.
In our budget request, yes, sir.
Okay, so.
But not the city request. That's the total state, federal, and local request.
I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's just the numbers, right?
Absolutely.
So this year, the total, the total revenue for the school system, which includes federal, state, and local, right?
Yep.
All three funding sources, right?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Is, is up by over half a million dollars.
Yes, sir. Agreed.
So that's why you got into the restricted.
Restricted and partially restricted.
But it is up, so everybody understands it's up.
Never tried to hide that, sir.
Okay. So I think one of the confusions is, some people said there's a cut, some people says, you know, is up a cut, is down a cut? So I want to make sure you, you understand from our perspective, when we're looking at things, you know, we're looking at, you know, when you have a total revenue amount in one year, and it goes up over half a million, that's not a cut, that's actually an increase in revenue.
But it is a local cut.
It's a total increase in revenue. So we're in the same boat. If we get, if we get real estate taxes in one pocket and property taxes in another pocket, you know, and all these sources of revenues coming in, when we add it up, if we're up in total, we don't call that a cut, we call that an increase in the revenue base, right?
Sure.
So we see that, on this side of the table, as an increase in revenues.
Absolutely.
Okay. So then when you look at the details, that what got you to that $592,000, right? The state went from $16.2 million up to $17.1 million, so they're up $940,000. And so here's where some of the questions are. So when the state does that funding, our understanding is, they use an index.
Yes, sir.
There's a very detailed index that the state calculates, how much funding to get a local government, based on that municipality's ability to pay, so they look at things like the real estate valuations, the per capita income, the poverty levels, they look at how that community looks.
Divided by population and school enrollment.
Divided by population, so they look at an index, and so the communities that are considered poorer, which means they don't have the financial means to pay as much, right, have a different index than the communities that have a much higher ability to pay.
You're exactly right.
So then the state looks at that index, and they, they changed our index to the direction of, we need to give this city more money, because their ability to pay has gone the wrong direction.
By about 1%.
Right, by 1%. So, from this side of the table, right, that says, to anybody that looks at it, says, you know, that means the city has less ability to put money into the school system. The state's trying to pick up the difference, right, by putting more in, because they recognize, by looking at where we are, we're not in a financial position to put additional funds in, right? We're actually the opposite.
Which is, which is why we request it less.
I mean, we were even on the APA list of one of the communities that was financially stressed, right? All right, so then you get down to the, to the federal revenues, which are $62,000 different, we won't talk about that, than the locals. So we looked at this, and the one thing that, that we looked at was, okay, the debt service of $247,200. All right, so talk about that for a second, because that went from last year to zero. What was that, and why did you take it from $247,200 to zero? So explain that.
I have explained that repeatedly, four different times before tonight.
Just one more time, one more time.
For this council. We, 20 years ago, the city did a, a project at Virginia Middle School, where they did a renovation. We've been paying on that annually, the last annual payment that, for that comes, which mean, the last annual payment for that happens in June, so we no longer have that annual payment. However, for the last 20 years, that's been $248,000 that we've not had access to from the city to use for other means. So we've had, now, I will also remind you that we have about $500,000 additional dollars in debt service that were taken out of our normal local appropriation. So before this year, we were paying three-quarters of a million dollars in debt service, which means it should have been taking care of the city. However, because we are team-oriented and trying to do the very best we can to be a good partner, we, we took that on our, on our own, without asking for an additional city appropriation. So, very clearly, in the last, at least four different occasions, I've told you all that the $248 would not be requested this year. I gave you like five options of how I thought it could be best used, and also shared that in two years, when the new school opens, that we would need that money to realize the full savings, so that our school project would be budget neutral or better.
Right. So, go ahead.
Yeah, that particular item was not used for pencils and papers and teachers' pay and what have you, strictly for the building.
No, but it prevented us from being able to spend that much money on teachers' pay and pencils and paper and books.
I understand that, but the city still paid for it, and it had nothing to do with your operating of your school, it was paying for that building.
Right.
So I continue, you have actually $839,000 more money this year, this coming year, than the $592 that you show, because you're deducting $247 as if that's coming out of school operations, oh, no, that's not coming out of your operations.
It was coming out of school operations, because we didn't, we couldn't, we didn't have $247,000 to spend on those things.
Right, it was paid.
We were spending on facilities.
It was a pass-through, it had nothing to do with your operation, that's what I'm saying.
We have another $500,000 we, we could share with you.
I'm not arguing that with you, I'm arguing the $247.
What Mr. Hubbard's saying is the way, you know, we're thinking this way.
Sure.
We're trying to tell you how we're thinking, okay?
Absolutely.
So when you have a capital project like that one, that gets paid off, it's over, no more payments, right? Then, until another capital project is approved to go forward, that money is a reduction, right?
That's exactly, that's my point I've made exactly.
That's the way we view the city stuff, right? So that's the way we view this.
That's my point.
So that's actually not there. So it tells us that you were able to run the, run the school system last year, right?
Yep, yes, sir.
With the money that was there last year, even though the $247,200 was going out on debt service, so the extra money was available, you were still able to operate, right, the school system.
Yes, sir.
With the other funds. So when you made that kind of statement there, see, that's, that's a disconnect between what you're saying, what we're seeing, right? We're, we're just saying, hey, you were able to operate with, you know, with the funds you had left, because that went to debt service, now that's, that's over, that's a zero.
How our school board operates the schools is not council's job to determine. Your job is to approve and appropriate.
You know what I'm saying, no, let's don't, let's don't, we're just trying to understand here, let's, let's don't get kind of combative with the whole, I'm trying, I'm trying to say, I'm trying to say, here's the way we're looking at it, so we can all kind of understand each other, right? So we're getting on the same page.
Just want to be sure you're painting a clear picture, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, the picture that we saw was city school debt service, right, which is paying debt, right, off, went from $247,200 down to zero. So you don't need that monies anymore, because that debt service.
So that multiple times, yes, sir.
Goes to zero, I'm just saying, that's the way we viewed it, so we viewed it correctly.
Yes, absolutely, and I shared it that way too.
Okay, so what was wrong with our fault, then, that you were able to operate the school properly last year, with what monies was there, less that $247,200, because you didn't have it last year, because you were paying it for debt service?
But we were making sacrifices along the way, for the last 20 years.
Okay, so you were making sacrifices.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, that's what we're trying to do as a city as a whole, right?
Agreed.
Make sacrifices, so that's, that's what we have to do at this point. All right, so when you look at that, we, we looked at this overall and said, okay, that capital's gone, there's no other big capital debt service approved, right? So $250,000 is gone, you're up $940 from the state, right? So pulling back $300 seems reasonable, because there's no other capital approved, that, that's just negating what was there anyway last year, because you were operating on a quarter million dollar less last year, right?
We were, are operating $6.9, yes.
So we felt that was reasonable, right? We felt that was a reasonable position to be in from the next year going forward, right? So how will the $300 reduction then, so now we're talking about, we pulled back $300, right, from the local funding, even though we saw the total go up by over half a million, the city pulled back $300. So how, I'm confused on how you intended to use that $300 and what you were going to not have to pay, or what, you know, what your plans were with that $300. I'm, I'm not sure I'm clear on that one.
Right. So with the full $900,000, again, I shared that at our budget presentation, I shared it over and over again. We were providing a raise for our teachers, we're adjusting our administrative salary scale, we're increasing subpay to get it, at least, our substitute teacher pay to get it at least equal to the starting salary or the starting rate of pay for a Walmart employee. We are increasing the number of days that our clerical staff works, there, a whole, our health insurance cost went up by $89,000, because we stayed with the city. We could have reduced that had we went away from the city. So there were several costs that we, that caused that $900,000 to be eaten up. So it wasn't that, you know, the $300,000 could be just taken away, because we, our, our board, your board, your, this council made a different set of priorities. Our board put their priorities in our people. We wanted to try to get our people on an even keel with other localities in the area, pay our teachers like professionals who have earned bachelor's degrees and master's degree, because we've not been able to do that in years past. And so that's what our board made as a budget priority, we had an increase from the state. You know, if, if you go to sit down at Thanksgiving dinner, and you get chicken, you get turkey and mashed potatoes and gravy, and then somebody brings in some sweet potatoes, they put sweet potatoes on your plate, it's not fair for somebody to come back in and take the mashed potatoes away. And that's what you're doing. We're, we've got additional funding, $330,000 of that, mind you, is money that we generated.
So you were, so let me be clear, though, the $300,000 that we pulled back, you're saying that you were going to, you were going to use that, you were intending to use that to pay school operating costs?
Not necessarily the $300,000, but the, the state increase was included, all those things that I mentioned.
I'm not talking about the state increase, I'm talking about the, you're going from one topic, I'm talking about the $300,000 that we, you know, we took our $6,986 down by $300 to $6,686.
How are we going to make an adjustment for that $300,000, is that what you're asking?
And I'm just saying, where were you intending to apply that $300 before we took it away? And I was hearing, operational costs, is that true?
So here are, here are the things that we would, we would, I would recommend to our board, and I would have provided this information to you, but I don't think it's the right venue to do that, when I've not presented those recommendations to our board, because we haven't officially received that cut as of yet. However, some things that we would consider to make up the $300,000 local appropriation cut would be the electricity position that we've discussed, that we're trying to add, that we have applicants for currently. We would take part of that, our compensation supplement away from all of our staff, not just from our teachers, but from all of our staff. We had, because we took on custodial services on our own last year. took on custodial services on our own last year, we had to we had to get rid of the bus aid position. And we were going to put some custodians on those buses to try to help the bus driver on on those tougher routes. However, what we found out is when those custodians were not in the cafeteria, there were messes to clean up, and we had custodians on buses, and that didn't work out. So we're restoring that. We would have to go back to not having those bus aids. And our main our transportation and maintenance supervisor was added the added responsibility of supervising custodians last year. And this year, we went off of our our contracted mowing and took mowing on in house. He's also supervising that. We would have to cut a secretary's position that was added for that. We were because we're not teaching, Virginia Middle School is one of our schools that is not fully accredited. We're also not offering enough instructional time, in my opinion, in the area of English reading and writing. So we were going to hire two additional teachers there. We won't be able to do that with the additional with the additional cut. We would have to look at reducing some coaching positions. We would that clerical increase that I told you about for the clerical staff working additional days, we would drop that. And that would be some of the solutions that I would provide. And also, our band has also asked for a line item to be added for some additional things. And so all those things added together, a little bit here, a little bit there, would get us to the three hundred thousand dollars. What I'm saying is there's no need for us to make those reductions in the great services that our schools are providing. Because even even if you didn't have it last Tuesday, which I believe you did, you've kind of hit a windfall this week of several hundred thousand dollars that you could easily provide to that and make sure that our schools remain funded, that our teachers are paid like professionals, which we're not currently doing at this point. And you give us the opportunity to keep the the dream alive to build a new school, which hasn't been done in decades here in our community. And it's way, way overdue.
All right. So what I heard through all that was all operational cost stuff. That's kind of what I heard, if everybody else heard.
Yeah, because we have to make the cuts on the local level, which is.
So now, when we had the when we had the meeting up at Virginia High in the auditorium, I remember hearing, we need that three hundred for the new school. And then that came up in a couple of meetings we had. I know the city manager had the same perception. So so now you see, I'm sitting here going, okay, was the three hundred K to support the new school project? Or was it operational costs?
Actually, what I said is there's there's two factors. Number one, there's an immediate need, which are those local things I just mentioned. And there's a future need, which I also just mentioned, was to keep the dream alive to build a new a new elementary school.
So how does it keep the dream alive? How does I'm missing the how does the three hundred K keep the dream alive? Because, you know, the way I'm just a numbers guy.
Absolutely.
I just I just go down the line item budget, right? And I was looking for your three hundred K. I was looking for the three hundred thousand, you know, and and where it would be. And I didn't see anything in here popped out that it was for the new school. So I was having a hard time understanding from the detail what it was going toward.
But if you would have if you would have paid close attention to four times I presented to you about the PPA project, I've told you repeatedly and been very clear, put an asterisk beside the two forty eight every time that we've mentioned it, that in order for us to build a new elementary school and be at least budget neutral, we have to keep a level funding request from this year's city appropriation. That includes returning the two forty seven, two hundred dollars two years from now in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, when the new school comes online. I've said that over and over and over and over again. So we already got to make up that two forty eight two years from now. If you take the three hundred thousand, it's not also it's going to have a local, I mean, an immediate impact. But it also means two years from now, when we come back online, that instead of finding the two forty seven two, you're going to have to find an additional three hundred thousand. I'm not a rocket scientist, but I know finding a half a million dollars in any budget that's this size is going to be a gargantuan task. And if we sit idly by and take the immediate cuts, which we can do, and we can make those sacrifices and make it work, it's not ideal. It doesn't pay our teachers like professionals. It doesn't fund the local things like we need to do. But then two years from now, when we're trying to get five hundred and forty seven back, I would say to you that that is going to be almost impossible.
So you you mentioned there when you when I asked that, I'm still not clear on whether you're applying this to the school. But you said budget neutral, right? So you got you got the vision of this new school.
Yes.
In order to pay for it, right, it's it's not a capital outlay of twenty five million.
No, sir.
It's like a capital lease. You know, it's like rent, you know, you're paying, you know, every year, just.
Those some of those details, sir, are I would caution you that some of those details are confidential.
Well, I'm just saying it's simple terms.
And you've agreed to that confidentiality agreement. So just please be careful.
So budget neutral. Let's talk about budget neutral. In order for you to be budget neutral, right, and have to pay for something like a project, right, then that means you have to make cuts in order to do that.
Yes.
So where are those coming from?
Well, if the four times that I presented this PPA, I've detailed very clearly the number of teaching positions that we would absorb that would cover those costs. That I mean, that's I don't know what else you did. There's going to be some operational savings, very little. The bulk of that is going to come from personnel, not personnel cuts, personnel attrition. We we on average have about twenty employees leave us in the summer. We need to absorb seventeen positions to generate the one point two millionish dollars it would take to make that payment. And so when we get two years from now, when it comes time for that first one point two million dollars, our staff will be seventeen people less, about ten teachers, a guidance counselor, a librarian, clerical, custodian, you know, those things that I presented in that budget would be personnel cuts that we would make from the state side. Because we, you know, right now, we've got SOQ funded positions, okay? And we we won't need all those funded positions when we consolidate. And so we're going to save seventeen positions by closing three and opening one. I don't know how much more. I mean, I've said that over and over.
No, that's fine. Yeah, we're just trying to make sure. It takes a while for people to absorb stuff, right? We're trying to be transparent.
I'm having trouble.
We need these discussions, right?
Why the school can't survive on another nine hundred thousand dollars that they didn't have last year?
Right.
Why is it that all these programs are going to hell in the handbasket, yet you've got nine hundred thousand dollars more money to spend?
I I.
What are you going to spend it on?
We don't have nine hundred thousand dollars. The budget increase is only about five hundred thousand, and that is eaten up and absorbed through that's eaten up and absorbed through salary increases that don't even get us to the to the state average, that don't even get us to competitive. It just makes us more competitive.
I understand what your philosophy is, and I appreciate it. But by the same token, just because you want to do it, doesn't mean it can be done financially.
Well, let me so let me go to another point, Mr. Mayor, that you made earlier about the LCL.
Before we leave, I got a question. We're going to get to the bottom of on this on this budget neutral. So you just mentioned seventeen staff reductions.
Yes, sir.
Right? And that's so you got operational cost reductions like utilities and lights and power and air conditioning. Seventeen positions in the school system go away.
Yes, sir.
So the community here understands that there's going to be seventeen less positions in the school system than there are today when the new school goes forward.
Yes, sir. And every one of our four.
Everybody understands that.
Every one of our four public hearings, we made that very clear. Every presentation I've made to city council, I've shown the chart that shows the 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 savings that we will have through personnel. I don't know why that's a surprise unless when I'm presenting that nobody's listening.
I didn't say it was a surprise. You said it was a surprise. I'm just making sure it's it's out in the open, transparent. Everybody understands that. So there's going to be seventeen positions that are cut, three schools are consolidated, right, in order to be budget neutral.
Yes, with the operational savings and the and the return of the two forty seven two.
Okay. Do you have another question?
All right. Well, this is from the city's standpoint. We're we're looking at within a year of having to completely fund all the school resource officers, which is not in your budget. It's still in our budget. We're getting grants currently to pay those. When they go away, the city's got unless we're crazy, we want to keep those resource officers in place.
I agree, yes, sir.
And I know the school wants it. Somebody's got to pay for that. And that's on top of that, plus the two forty seven you want back.
Well, let me just say to that, if we consolidate schools, Mr. Hubbard, from six to four.
I understand. You get to save some of that money.
We would need we would need two less, respectfully. We would need two less.
But that still doesn't get rid of the fact we got to have a big bill that we got to pay and no grants to pay us back. So.
Well, potentially.
Does it say everything? All these are good ideas? There's just not the money to pay for it unless we go out and start raising taxes, which Mr. Flainer, you know, he's he knows the answer. You can you can do a lot of things. You keep raising taxes. But what happens to the people that have a hard time paying now?
I'm not I'm not suggesting that any taxes need to be raised.
Oh, I understand.
I mean, we we have two proposals that not only can be budget neutral, but can be revenue generators for the city. You you have heard that. You've all heard that.
Well, those are maybes. We we built a shopping center, maybe, and look where we are today.
Right. But we can't we can't.
We may be going pro.
Maybe is yes, if we if we kill the process right now.
Mr. Mr. Hubbard, thank you, by the way, for saying that. Yeah, we can do everything you say, Mr. Superintendent. But it requires the taxpayers. And there's actually, I think, four thousand property owners in this city, okay? Four thousand. They own multiple properties a lot. So we can tax them. In the past, I think that the school system, whomever's been on the school board, made a request and a proposal, and the councils of the past basically rubber stamped it. Let me tell you from my position.
That's that's not true, sir.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, let me tell you what that's let me tell you my position so you understand it, where I'm going with it. Whether that's true or not true, we have everybody has to absorb a little bit of pain, okay? Now, if you're prepared to say on behalf of the school system, and your board of school board who doesn't have a balanced budget, by the way, right now.
Which is no surprise. You were told that on March twenty second.
It doesn't surprise me what that's what your school board would do. It doesn't surprise me at all. They don't have a balanced budget, okay? But they're prepared. And by the way, your school board has zero business owners. They have one person that's in the business of working for himself as an auto mechanic and so forth for his family. And, you know, there's just no business acumen whatsoever, period, on your school board. And I think that's important before a group comes and says, you do this, and so forth and so on. And we're not a rubber stamp. And we have no obligation. Here's the thing. Your school board can recommend anything they want. And they have no no issues. Because, you know, if they get everything they want, then we have to eat it and we have to make taxes go up for people. If they don't get what they want, they're not obligated, you know, and so forth and so on. They can simply say, well, that blanky blank council didn't do anything for us. They don't like children. Okay? And, you know, that's very, very sad that we that your board can put our council in a position that they put us in, knowing full well that we have a fiscal nightmare at us. And I tell you, being fiscally responsible to the future of our citizens here is as important as putting three hundred thousand or two hundred and forty seven thousand, which, by the way, never needs to be in because you've never used it for for any kind of scholastic purposes. It's been a bond payment. So really, to say that we get that we're taking that out of the kids is ridiculous.
I didn't say that.
It's disingenuous. It's disingenuous.
Mr. Flainer, I never said that you took that out. I offered that back.
That's disingenuous at best.
It's not disingenuous. I offered it back. Never asked for it.
Okay.
Never asked for it, sir.
Okay, well, let's just you said we've taken five hundred and forty seven thousand dollars out of our education system, which isn't really true. We've taken.
No, I didn't say that. I said three hundred thousand.
Thank you for letting me finish my sentence instead of interrupting me.
I mean, don't don't tell things that aren't true.
Well, it is what it is. And I.
It's not true.
Okay, well, there's there's some things that you've told me that turn out to not be true. Okay, so don't tell me what the truth is and isn't. Okay, we can get into the the whole narrative if we want to. But bottom line is, we have no obligation as a council to be anything but fiscally responsible. Okay? Now, if you're saying, and your promotion is, we want to put this back in, then you're prepared to say, on behalf of your school board, that we need another four dollars trash collection fee per month.
Said that earlier. Yes, sir.
So four plus what we're doing already, which would be eight, right?
But there's no need to do that now with the new the new information that's come online just this week.
You're cherry picking.
Yeah.
That is more revenue than budget. But did you look at all the rest of the budget? Where we're short everywhere.
Actually, the you have a positive revenue projection, sir, and you'll hear that later tonight in your in your finance report.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, remember, let's let's be clear here, the way we're thinking. Projections are projections. Let's be clear. Forecasts are forecasts. All forecasts are wrong. All projections are wrong. And I can I can spend hours teaching you that they're all wrong. They're either up or they're down. They're never right.
Yes, sir.
Now, we've typically always been on the wrong side of that wrong.
Mm hmm.
They've always been. So as a business owner, businesses do not count on that until it comes in. So we can't count on a projection. We look at them to try to understand trends, what's driving it that way? Is something going on that we don't understand? But we can't count on that as real money, right? That that's a mistake to do that. And we're never going to do that as long as, you know, we're talking about being fiscally responsible. We can't do that. So I want I want us to get that out of our vocabulary. When when the revenues are coming in, and the CFO is able to deposit in the checking account, then it's real. Until then, it's not real. It's just a projection.
I I would I would say to you that there is real money in the tune of several hundred thousand dollars that was just presented to us at the the finance committee meeting this past Wednesday, above and beyond what the target goals that the treasurer's office had for the this year's budget. So I will say, you're exactly right. I understand that business proposition. However, you are currently four hundred thousand or somewhere in that neighborhood, four hundred thousand dollars to the good. And you've already made it's only May. There's still six weeks of collection left, and you're already above what you anticipated receiving from the treasurer's office.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Perd Dr. Perdian. On behalf of your school board that hired you and you represent here tonight, you've asked for ten to fifteen minutes. And I guess with the Q and A, it's gone way past that. That's okay. That's okay. It's it's information gathering thing. But on behalf of your school board, are you requesting us to add on another four dollars monthly garbage pickup fee to we've already put in the budget, four dollars? Are you proposing as a proponent, based on what your school board is wants us to do, that we add an additional four dollars per household? Yes or no?
So, Mr. Flair, I had made that recommendation very clearly in public, made it to this council whenever I offered solutions to how we could get to that point. However, at this point, I don't see that you need to do that because you have a windfall of money that's above what you projected, that's in the bank right now. But here's what I would say. Your Keith Perdian's not making this recommendation to you. Your auditor made a recommendation to you that you pay for trash with trash money. That's not my recommendation.
Let me let me remind you of this. Last year, the jail put in their budget six hundred thousand dollars, okay? And that was budgeted. And along about three months ago or four months ago, there was a shortfall of a significant sum, roughly three hundred, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. So being prudent, even though you want to be optimistic, and I think it's good to be optimistic about what's coming in, as it stands right now, your status quo would say, we can't do these things.
Well, we're three hundred down in the jail, we're three hundred up in the tax collection. We're even.
Absolutely. We're even with the game.
I would just wait till you hear the financial report.
Well, we're still just be even.
I'm going to cherry pick the expenses. You can cherry pick the income. We're even.
Yes. Yeah, this puts us even for this this year with what we've had to pay.
Yeah, and you can and you can and you can and you can debate, and you can go back and forth, right, for actually the next thirty, what, thirty eight days, thirty nine days, right? Because it's not over till it's over.
Yes, sir.
So that's four hundred up could actually be another five hundred down before it's over, right? Because we don't close the books until the.
Not realistically with six weeks left. That's a that's a big exaggeration.
Lots can happen, right? Lot of stuff can happen. We got surprised on an obligation on debt service this year that absolutely zero people up here and in those chairs was anticipated. And it was not ten dollars. So lots of things can happen in thirty nine days. But that's not.
I agree with that. Not to the half a million.
The point is, we got we got to be conservative with the way we think. Really, we're in we're in a zone where we don't have time to be predicting and assuming anything. But I want to get back to this.
Can I ask you one question?
I want to get back to the new school. I just want to make it clear that there's not a single person on this council, and I've talked to all of them, that's against the new school. Not a single one of us. We know you need a new school. This community needs a new school.
Thank you.
That's a fact, right? And I ask for stuff all the time in my business. But, you know, the bigger part of the question is, timing is everything.
I agree.
Timing is everything. We know you need a new school. But is now the time for that? Are we going to put the city in a more risky position, right, by doing it earlier rather than seeing how few things unfold? So what I'm trying to say is, timing, I'm not feeling the timing is right now. I think it's too risky. I think it's a big project, right? I think it's an important project, but it's a big project. And until we know a few more things, it's way too risky for us, right? Because we are just now, this will be the first year, if we can close this, this will be the first year that we've not had to take out loans, short term loans, to pay the city's operating costs, first time.
Congratulations. That's a great accomplishment.
That's not the point of congratulations. The point is, it's the first time. We, you That, that's not the point of congratulations, the point is, it's the first time, we, you know, we just, we just, and we just barely did it. We just barely did it, and we, and it may not be over till it's over, right? Because she's still nervous that, you know, we might have to tap the tan, let's hope we don't. So, that just shows you that the predicament we're in, or the position we're in, is, is very, uh, very risky, right? I mean, first time, so we need margin, we need more room to be comfortable that we're in a position to take on a project like that, and take on more risk, and take on more financial obligations, right? Because the city has no room to take on financial obligations. We already know the debt limit's at the max, we know the IDA's got obligations, you know, you add all that up, and you wonder, how in the world is it we're able to pay anything, honestly? So, we've gotta bleed that back quick, right, over the next four years. So, until that gets bled down to where we got some breathing room somewhere, we can't take on any more risk. You know, we're like, we're like somebody that has maxed out every credit card, have, has bought a half a million dollar home, we've maxed out our ability to borrow, uh, for another mortgage, we've got brand-new cars, they're all maxed out, and our revenue is not able to cover all that, right? So, that's what everybody's gotta understand, we are not in a place to take on more risk. Now, I think the prudent thing, my recommendation, the prudent thing is, you know, continue to look at it and study it, and look at it in different ways, right? Because, you know, I want more teachers in the classroom, to be honest with you, I don't want less, I think that's where the rubber hits the road, right? So, when you say staff positions a seventeen reduction, you know, I, I get concerned, I'd, I'd rather see more teachers, less administrators, honestly, right? Because they're the ones that really make the difference in the classroom, but you gotta keep talking about it, you gotta keep studying it, you gotta make sure you're looking at it from all the angles, right? I keep saying, look at it from all the sides of the Rubik's Cube, right? Sometimes ask questions that are just the opposite of the way you're thinking, to see if you've not thought of something. Because when I look at it, and other people have looked at it, we see, we see opportunity, right, in, in the school system, because we've got older schools that are, um, ratios of the teacher to student is way down, population's way down from what it used to, so we see opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
So, the question is, how can we take advantage of some of that opportunity now, in the short term, before we take on more risk for the long term?
And you hit the problem, because your credit cards are maxed, Mr. Mayor, you don't have the financing that would take to get those buildings that we're currently using that are out of date, up to code, to be able to do that. We currently just, just found out this past week that the elevator at Stonewall Jackson is now completely out of service, uh, range, so we're gonna have to replace an elevator at Stonewall Jackson to a building that's not even fully handicap accessible, and to put that kinda money into a building that's that age, to me, does not make good sense, especially whenever the cost for renovations, you don't have the debt limit to do it. The PPA program, if it gets approved, if it gets approved, provides a way that's an alternative financing model that could not only be budget neutral, but could be a revenue generator, but you're, you, until we move forward in the process, those details are not gonna be clear to you. When those details are brought to you, if you think that it's a bad idea, you get the last vote of city council. We, the school board does not make, I've been clear about that. We can't move forward with this without an approval from city council. So, once we make a decision on the, the financing contracting team that we wanna go with, we go through that whole PPA process, the last thing that we do is we bring it to city council for final approval. If at that point that you think, you think it's too risky, council has that exact right to vote no. Until that point, the ball's in our court to, to, to make, to make everything happen up until we, it comes to your vote.
And I think from my perspective, what I'm trying to say from this council's perspective is, we want you, while, while we have time, we don't have to do this today, that we look at all the options, and we, and we define each option next to each other, and you present why the PPA is the best option, and you, and you present it to everybody, completely transparent, you know, and so we can all ask questions, and at the end of the day, that's the only way you get to the right answer, is keep drilling down and keep asking and make sure it is the right option, right?
But there's no other option, because you don't, you have no debt capacity. So, it has to be through alternative financing, the only way you can do alternative financing is through PPA.
Well, I never use the word "never," because there's always options, right? There's always options.
And, and you have a good one.
Sometimes it's just you've never thought of the others, right? There are always options, um, so my challenge to you and to everybody that's on the team is, make sure we haven't, not uncovered one option or two that we need to think about, because the city is in a position-
That's how we found this option, doing exactly that.
And this is an option, I grant you, this is an option, right? But to be budget, be budget neutral, I think I told you this in a meeting, I said, "We, we can't, we can't think budget neutral." When, when, when a business makes an investment, right, you're looking for a return on the investment. So, if I go, if I go invest a million five, right, I'm looking to pay that back over some short period of time, two years, five years, I don't want it to just be budget neutral. In other words, I'm no better off than when I started, because I'm not saving any expenses, I, I'm spending the same money, getting the same outcome that I was before I spent the money.
Right, but unfortunately, public schools do not, uh, provide income, so we can't, we can't do that business model you're talking about, but I will tell you, there are divisions and localities across this Commonwealth who would absolutely, I don't know what they would do, but they would love to have the opportunity to build a school that is not only budget neutral, but has the potential to generate revenue.
Mr. Superintendent, let me ask you this back again, I wanna make sure on the record tonight, that you're not at, going back, I know you've said this, and you've turned around and said something else tonight, that we've, we've got all this money coming in, of course, we, we can't, had a shortfall because of the jail, so whatever money we have coming in makes us neutral, revenue neutral, least of the expenses this year, this year.
Yeah.
Because we don't start a new fiscal year until July one, sir, so, but let's, let's talk a minute, so you're not advocating on behalf of your school board and your individuals for a fort, on the record tonight, is that your position? You're not advocating for-
Mr. Fleener, a- as I said earlier, I did recommend in open session that you could fix this issue by increasing the garbage collection fee by four dollars, I absolutely did, did say that, stood by that until Wednesday of this week. Wednesday of this week, when we had a favorable budget, uh, report through the finance committee, and the realization that several hundred thousand dollars above what was anticipated in May was available, that no longer is needed, you have the means to do what is right for our school and our community by simply using the money that comes in. And I will say that I, I'm not, I don't work in your finance department, but I do attend the finance meetings, and I listen very intently when I go to them, I don't believe that you, that that four hundred thousand dollars will be needed to make it to three hundred thousand dollars that you need for the jail. I think that you're gonna have a positive, a positive budget influx of several hundred thousand dollars, including the additional appropriation that you've had made to the jail. And Mr. Muppert, if I could come back to one comment you made earlier that I didn't get a chance to address, when you talked about the LCI, there was a one percent change in the LCI, that did not accom-, that did not account for nine hundred thousand dollars of our additional state funding. The state funding came for, for three reasons. Number one, um, um, LCI, that accounts for about two hundred thousand dollars of that nine hundred thousand dollars. That's an approximation made by the Department of Ed, because they can't tease that number fully out, but it's around two hundred thousand dollars. The three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that we got in additional CTE funds because our staff found a mistake in the, in the budget formula and, and brought that to light, and then the remainder of whatever the two hundred plus three thirty-five out of that nine hundred thousand is due to re-benchmarking, where the state is coming back, not because of how poor your division or your locality is, but because they cut state funding in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, uh, to everybody across the Commonwealth. I will also say, just because we got a state increase this year, we got a million dollar state decrease in two thousand nine, and the opposite didn't happen from city council. So, if, so my question to you would be hypothetically, if we got a million dollar decrease next year, would you make that up with local funds?
Well, I would say hypothetically, you know the position, and I don't have to be hypothetical, we don't have the means to make up a million dollars, but I understand your, I understand what you're trying to say, but I, I think I agree to disagree a little bit, because there's, there's a reason why the state provides municipalities like Bristol more money for education than they do Alexandria, right?
Mm-hmm.
Colonial Heights, tho-, you know, those kinds of-
I could bore you to death with a, a LCI lesson that would, you would fall asleep seven times.
So, if they made a mistake, if they made a mistake, and you said a mistake, if they made a mistake, why aren't we going back after that mistake? What, have you talked to anybody about, did this go on for two years, five years, six years? Did they, did they not give us-
We, we have not, we have not got that answer, but we're continuing to ask those questions.
So, what if it is nine hundred thousand dollars over the last five years?
That, that would be great.
That's four point five million dollars? So, then what are you gonna do? And you're gonna get with Randy, and you're gonna go to the state, you're gonna drive up to Richmond, you're gonna find out why we can't get our four point five million back, if they made a mistake, and you can show it. I mean, that's the, that's the way we gotta think as a team, right? You can't just make a mistake, and it's like, "Oh, they made a mistake, there's your nine hundred thousand," but, because they owed us money back then, and we've all had criticism of the state in these chambers, right?
Absolutely.
And a lot of times, they come up with unfunded mandates, you gotta do this, but then they don't fund it. Well, municipalities like this can't support unfunded mandates.
Amen.
And so, if they make a mistake, that even makes it twice the problem, right? Because now they're not giving us our fair share, what they should to begin with, so you have to go back after that money.
We are actively still trying to, to get answers to that question, how long has that occurred, what recourse is there to, to address that? We just, I don't have the answer, I can make something up, sir, but I just don't have the answer to that question, but it's certainly on our radar.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's two things, uh, is there any correlation between a new school and academics with, with the students that you have?
Yeah, there, there, you can find research to prove anything that you wanna do, there's a, a full body of research that say the quality of facility is related to academic achievement, yes, sir.
Well, and another thing that really concerns me is, you know, the most blighted area of Bristol is a Highland View school, that's apparently the worst school we have.
I, I would agree.
I mean, okay, and I mean, that's just what I hear from a structural point of view and so forth and so on, but the students appear to thrive there for, you know, for whatever the particular reason is, they seem to thrive, uh, to a certain extent, but, you know, if, if we're going to do anything, it bothers me, none of it, that I'm aware of, no school board, no council member went to look at sites, I don't think we were invited to even look at sites.
Actually, Mr. Hartley did, and we invited council as well.
Okay, well, I'm glad Mr. Hartley went, but, uh, you know, realistically, the smart, wise thing to do is to reward or award, um, and I've heard this from multiple people, tear down Highland View and put a new school at that location, because it is a blighted area, it will give pride back to the people, I mean, not the pride back to, but it'll give them pride to have a new school in their jurisdiction. But it seems like we failed to even consider that prospect or possibility.
No, we considered, there's not enough acreage there.
Ah, okay.
I, I had suggested, when I went on those sites, Mr. Fleener, I suggested that, because, um, I'm very familiar with that area, and, and I said, you know, "We own a softball field, why not build," you couldn't build a one-level school, but you could build on that softball field, and then where the existing school is, is tear it down and have parking up there.
I agree, it lays good.
But, I mean, I saw, I made that suggestion to Mr. Perigin, to every school board member, and, uh, for what it was worth, but-
Well, I mean, I, I, and I think you would agree that that is a, that, that particular area down there where you're talking about lays well, I mean, it lays better than actually where you're proposing to build on.
It doesn't meet the requirements for acreage, sir, it's, it's, it's a no, it's a no mover. The state sets, um, guidelines to use for building schools, classroom sizes, the amount of acreage that you need per student, how big the gym needs to be, five acres is not even, is, is, is half of what the requirements would be for the school the size that, that we need. Five acres is, it take, ten acres is the minimum.
Okay.
Which is why we, when we did our tour, that we only looked at properties that were ten acres or larger.
Then how about Stonewall Jackson area?
Yeah, Stonewall Jackson also does not have ten acres.
So, we had to find ten acres somewhere, and-
Yeah.
This so happens, it happens to be at Van Pelt.
No, we looked at thirteen different sites, from exit one all the way to exit seven, thirteen different sites in the city. Very exhaustive search, very exhaustive process, turned over every rock and every stone that we could find.
Well, if you build up there, you're gonna be turning over some rock, I assure you that.
They, they've actually did a core sample, and the, and the property's been identified as very suitable for building.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions here and comments, some of them have already been talked about, and I'm gonna go into a little bit detail on a few of them, but anyway, I'm having a hard time, uh, getting my head, head wrapped around the urgency of this new school. I don't understand why it's being pushed so hard, so quick, when this council, just within the last year, has went through the restructuring of our finance to see exactly where we're at, and what we're obligated to with our debt restructuring. This is the first budget cycle since our restructuring, that we have a fixed number, knowing what our goal is, that we have to get to, to meet our debt obligation, and the school system is pushing hard for a new school, which is gonna create more debt, I don't care how you, what title you put on it and how you deem it, it is dead, it's eleven million dollars that this city is gonna be responsible for, one way or another, whether it's through this council or through the school system. The taxpayers are on the hook for it, period. And I'm gonna go into a little bit comment on the debt.
Fifteen, I just, I wanna make sure, you're looking at fifteen to seventeen million dollars to build the new school, not, not eleven.
Seventeen, okay, seventeen, okay.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a wide range, depending on all those things, but the, regardless, the financing plan, as long as our appropriation stays at, as it is currently, the financing plan meets those obligations.
Okay, and I'm gonna go ahead, and I'm gonna go ahead and say this, it's the good ideas that sound good that's got us where we're at today, because everybody rushed and ran with that torch wide open without looking where they was going, and that's where we're at today.
This process started in two thousand eleven, this is not a new process.
Okay, uh, well-
We're not rushing, we've been working on this since two thousand eleven.
It's new to us, it's new to us, okay? But anyway, I'm gonna say we need to slow down, we need to get our feet back on the ground again with our finances in this city, to where we have a clear path and know where we're going. It's not that the mayor has made a comment, and he's already said, "There's not one person on this council that is against the school," it is terrible timing. And I made a comment that I could see that it's gonna be somewhere between five and seven years before, in my mind, I can see a path to a new school, we're just gonna have to have some patience. And I understand you wanna keep that level funding for the new school, because you gotta keep your funding up to pay for the school, when you go through all your restructuring and all of that. So, I understand that, but, and I understand you've got some quotes, or got one quote or so on the schools, on this new school?
Two, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, well, one, I'm gonna say, the school system has not kept this council up to date with this project. Now, bear with me, not one time have I seen a real number of seventeen, I was thinking it was eleven, tonight, this is new information, now it's seventeen million, okay? You could not get that estimate from anybody without a set of blueprints or a drawing. This council, bear with me, this council has yet to see the first drawing of any structure, we have no idea of the building materials that it's gonna be used, okay? And twenty years ago, this city was debating on whether or not to do a new middle school, and I thank God they chose to keep that middle school and renovate it. We need information from the school system on the current buildings that we have, what is it gonna take to renovate 'em and modernize 'em? Because I tell, I'm telling you, I'm in the construction end in my business, and we do not build anything today like we used to fifty years ago, we just don't do it, you can't afford to do it. If you came with a proposal to build a school of the same quality in material and workmanship as we currently have right now, you would be shocked, you would be shocked. So, I have a feeling that you're gonna present an inferior product that is gonna have a twenty, twenty-five-year note on it, and that is gonna be the life expectancy of the building that you're gonna be proposing to build, but I don't know that, because you have not brought us that information.
Mr. Wingard, I have to, I have to argue with you on that point, because this exact packet in this room right over here, we met in closed session, and we provided this confidential information to you, if you've not read it, I'm sorry, but you have been provided this information, sir. You've not been provided the second one that we have, because our legal counsel is, we You've not been provided the second one that we have, because our legal counsel is, we did it right in this conference room, because that one was unavailable.
I remember vaguely, I remember that one, but it was vague, there was no real numbers in that.
Right, and the reason that they, PPA does this, as I've said before, PPA is a process where they use existing site plans that have already been built. That's one of the ways that they save money, they, they take existing plans, they incorporate it into a contractor locally that can do it. That's, that's the beauty behind it, is they don't, and once we get, once we decide who, which of these, uh, groups that we're gonna go with, at that point, we would get a precise plan. Until, until we decide who we're going with, we get a conceptual plan, which does, it talked about the square footage, it talked about the classroom space, it talked about where the playgrounds were gonna be, it talked about where the new road was gonna be. Mr. Fleaner wouldn't take the document that night, and the other four of you, we gave you the document, document that night.
Okay, I, I just don't think it's appropriate for the school system to ask us to keep funding level with so many unanswered questions, okay? It's not that we're against it.
I have, I've answered, I've answered every question that you've had.
I think what you're missing is, is the context of the project we're talking about is a huge project.
I agree.
It's a huge, long-term project, it's a huge, long-term risk, it's a huge, long-term potential liability for the city, which means you might have to have fifty meetings in this council chamber to work through every question, one at a time, maybe five times, so it sinks in and we clearly understand it. Because I think the concerns are, the concerns are consistent. Everybody's got a concern that the quality of construction is not nearly gonna be what we've experienced in this city. So we're gonna wake up after we've went through this entire budget neutral and paid for this school, and that school's not gonna be worth the ground it's standing on, once we're done, we're gonna have to have another school. That's a big concern. Why are we budget neutral? Why can't, why can't this investment bring back a savings to the city, not just budget neutral? You know, new buildings, you know, energy efficiency, new buildings with classroom size, with the way they're presented, why, why can't it be at least a half a million dollar savings? Why is it budget neutral?
Because I've not, I'm not through negotiating yet, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so you're working on it being better than budget neutral?
Absolutely, this is just the initial proposal, there's still negotiations to be done. And I will also add, not to be smart, but just to say, there have been two different times that I've come to update council on our PPA process, and I've been asked, please keep it short, we don't need a lot of detail at this point. I've, I've got that documentation right here, so it's not because I've not tried to provide that information, I just know that, uh, there's been times when council's not been receptive to hearing it.
That's right, and we're having kind of a long discussion tonight, and I told you...
Yes, and I'm thankful.
I told you out in the hallway the other day, you know, in council chambers in here, is probably the, not the right venue for that. It's almost like you gotta have a dedicated three-hour work session, probably every quarter, leading up to the decision on this. I mean, that's how big this is.
I would agree.
Right, so it's not just in here for fifteen, twenty minutes, forty-five going through that, it's too big for that.
I would agree.
So we need to have more, you agree we need to have more discussions?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So, so back to being, being a numbers guy, you remember this, this, this ADM report, right? This superintendent report, right? So I go back and look at this to say, are we really being unreasonable when, when we look at how we're funding the schools? So I take the amount of local funding...
Which year are you looking at, sir?
This is two thousand and sixteen, right, that was the latest that was out there. I didn't have anything later than this, this is, I was handed this as the latest, uh, if there's one more recent, that's fine.
I'd, I'd sent you the one that was more recent.
I think this is the one I printed off from that, uh, pretty sure.
That's probably the one that was printed off, but I do know he sent us some more recently.
Okay, anyway, the point is, we'll look at the data and see if it's different. When I looked at this data, I said, okay, is what we're doing reasonable, right? So back in, this is fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, right? The city of Bristol gave six million point six nine five to the school system, that was the local funding that year. Population of the students was twenty-two ninety-nine. So they divided out on this report, we spent twenty-nine hundred and twelve dollars per pupil in two thousand and sixteen. So I do the same math on this year, so I take your number, which was at the top of your, you know, at the top of your budget, right here. So I use twenty-one twenty-seven, right? And I divide the six, six, eight, six, because we pulled back three hundred thousand. So six, six, eight, six divided by that number is thirty-one hundred and forty-three per student. So it's actually up two hundred dollars per student, which is almost ten percent on a per pupil basis.
But that's an incorrect calculation, because when the state finances that, when, I'm sorry, when the state calculates that, there are certain expenditures and revenues that they take out of that, that, that calculation. They, the state...
So this is incorrect, I would say that you have the responsibility going back to the state. Why, why do they, why do they go to the means of doing this, right?
So that they can compare apples to apples across the entire Commonwealth.
Exactly, so that's what we're trying to do, compare apples to apples.
But your calculation is not comparing apples to apples, you're comparing apples to oranges. Actually, if you look at the next fiscal year, the most recent, the city appropriation is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, I believe, but it's something, it's, it's, it's less than that. And this next year, it will be less than that, too. You, I see what you're saying, but you, you have to calculate the numbers the same way the state did to come up with that. Actually, the fall, the next year, the next year, the most recent report will show that the city's appropriation per pupil is down from that twenty-nine hundred dollars. And let me tell you that overall, our per pupil is up, because we have received two Twenty-First Century Grants, worth six hundred thousand dollars each, however, it does not go to educate every student in the division. It only goes to educate, uh, a, a number of students at two different schools, and it's all after-school issues. And so those numbers are skewed if you try to look at it a per pupil basis.
Well, I would, I would say I will agree to this group, we have to look at it on a per pupil basis. You have to have, when you're, when you're a government entity this big, with these many millions of dollars that plod, you've gotta have some metrics that you can count on to know how you're gauging yourself, right? Am I funding this properly, equally, how's it compared to last year, how's it compared to other places like us, right? So when I looked at this, like Norton, where you came from, is twenty-five hundred dollars per student versus twenty-nine hundred. So you came from the school system that was funded at a less capacity per pupil than we are.
Out of one, out of one hundred and thirty-two school divisions, Bristol is in the top, in the bottom sixteen.
I think we'll challenge that number, and I'd like to see that calculation, because if you take, well, hang on just a second, hang on just a second. So if you take and start comparing us to these others, a lot of these other places do, do not have a jail, they do not have a sheriff's department, they do not have a solid waste department, so all that's gotta be peeled out. You can't use that as a top-line revenue. When you start dividing fifty-one point five million, right, divided by what we gave the school, that skews it the wrong direction. You can't do that, that's real apples and oranges.
But they, they do have a jail, a regional jail appropriation, even if they don't own the jail, they still have a regional jail appropriation. The solid waste fund was not part of that calculation in the one that, in the one we presented.
I'm saying if you compare Bristol to Pulaski or Radford or, or Norton or anywhere, and we've got a jail and they don't, you've gotta peel all that out. If we've got a solid waste and they don't, you gotta peel that out. You gotta, you gotta be apples to apples, right, when you look at the numbers, right? And that's what the state tries to do, they just, they, they just put the local tax-based revenue, what was given to the localities and divided out by students.
So, yeah, and what I would say is, I understand exactly what you're saying, you do need to compare apples to apples, but if you're gonna do so, you can't just use your very general calculation that you just used, you have to use the things that the state pulls out in every calculation. If you'll look at the most recent data, as I said, you'll see that that twenty-nine hundred per pupil local contribution went down to twenty-seven. Mr. Reeves may have found it over there, twenty...
It was in fiscal year that ended, uh, I guess it's two thousand and sixteen, it was twenty-nine twelve, and then this most recent report, it's twenty-seven twenty-five, and I think, Mr. Mumpower, that's the document you has, it has twenty-seven twenty-five per pupil, which is the most recent report that I have.
I think he read the twenty-nine hundred, which was the one...
I have one that says twenty-nine twelve per student.
Okay, that's twenty, that's two thousand and sixteen, there is another one out there that's twenty-seven twenty-five.
Well, the quick math on that, if it's, if we got twenty-two fifty in students and we're budgeting six point five local, that's twenty-eight eighty-eight a student, just quick math on it.
Yeah, it, yeah, if you do quick math on both sides of it, you'll get a, a better realization.
All I know is they're getting more money, but apparently they can't spend it for anything.
Yeah.
Well, we're spending it for raises, uh, sal, uh, scale adjustments, all those things that I've shared, Mr. Hubbard. There's no surprise of what we're spending it on, I've been very clear about that as well.
I mean, I know that you have raises, et cetera, but until tonight...
A ninety thousand dollar decrease in Medicaid reimbursement, eighty-nine thousand dollar increase in health insurance costs. I mean, all those things have been very clear that make up what that, that...
Well, the city's got the same increases that you're talking about.
We prioritize doing raises.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna go one back to my first original question, why such a rush?
It's not a rush, we've been working on this since two thousand and eleven.
From a historical perspective, for everyone to hear this...
That's seven years.
From, from everyone to hear this and understand, two thousand and eleven is the same group that got us involved with the falls, that's the same group that lowered the tax rate and basically cost us four and a half million dollars in lost income, which could have gone a long way to paying for a school.
I agree with that.
So that group from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen alone, that council, they would go along with anything anybody came in here and asked for, including the school system.
Well, we, we couldn't at that point.
I'm just saying, okay? This is more of a statement than anything else.
Yes, sir.
So everybody here understand, everybody watching this understand, that's the council that has essentially got us somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty, seventy million and a whole at exit five. Plus, they lowered the tax rate to make everybody feel warm and fuzzy about how much their property taxes were gonna be, which cost us, according to, I think, Mr. Mayor, you said it was about four, four and a half million dollars, because they lowered the tax rate. So they're ultimately responsible, even though they said they were going along with you all, whatever, in two thousand and eleven historically, oh, you went to them in two thousand and eleven, I'm surprised you didn't try to hammer them down in two thousand and eleven, they would've given you anything. They really would've.
They didn't have the capacity, because they had other priorities at that time. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Fleaner, I think the city's money would've been spent a lot better on a new elementary school than it would on a retail investment, I absolutely agree. But that's not the bed that we're laying in now, I mean, we have to play with the cards that we've been decked.
And because of that, we're having to make decisions that we don't necessarily like to make as a group, but from a standpoint, a financial standpoint, and I think you talked at one of your presentations that we're gonna potentially lose Title I or whatever federal monies.
We did, we did not.
We did not lose federal monies, okay, okay. None of those are gonna happen, none, none of that's gonna happen from the federal government as far as...
The, the, the title reductions are not gonna occur this year.
That, that's good news.
That's very good news.
Okay.
But I will keep, just say that the state budget, I don't have to tell y'all that, y'all know the state budget's not approved yet. Uh, if the Senate, if the Senate version is approved, what the Senate put out, we'll have a reduction in what our appropriation. We're just going off the governor's request, I mean, the governor's approval.
If you, if they go with the governor, it'll help you.
Then our, if they, if that, we go, if they go with the governor's recommended budget, that's, that is what we based everything that we've been talking about on, our numbers are correct. If they go with the Senator, the House budget, we've, you know, we've gotta go back to the drawing board. I, I would assume that y'all would have to make some adjustments as well.
And then that, that's the concern here. I'm gonna remind everybody what our current debt is right now, so that everybody can get their heads wrapped around it one more time. This city's holding a hundred and eleven million dollars' worth of debt that we are one hundred percent liable for. The IDA is sitting on thirty million dollars that they say that we're not liable for financially, but morally, we're liable for that thirty million dollars. We cannot default on that. And you, tonight, mentioned you had five hundred thousand dollars' worth of outstanding debt, it's actually five hundred and ninety-five thousand, so you might as well round it off to six hundred thousand.
Thank you.
You take all of that, that we're obligated to and morally obligated to, we're sitting at a hundred and forty-two million dollars in debt. Now, if you take our budget and turn to page sixty and look at what our taxation is, our local revenues is thirty-three million dollars, our landfill is five point five million in revenue, which gives us a total of thirty-nine point five million dollars in revenue that we can control, that is our true money we can count on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can always increase it by tax, taxation, but that is not the mindset of this council. But if you take that hundred and forty-two million dollars that we're liable for morally and obligated, and you divide that by three hun, by thirty-nine point five million dollars, that is three and a half times our revenue sources, which equals three hundred and fifty percent indebtedness. That is astronomical, that is irresponsible. And it is this council's obligation to get this city back on its feet financially. And the only way that we can do that is to start going through this book, line item by line item, and seeing everything and anything that we feel like is out of sorts, okay? I just recently got your school board budget. Wow. We need parents, and we need taxpayers at this school board getting involved. We need people that are responsible, that can look at a budget and say, why? Justify this, okay? Because we expect every department to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I don't believe, my personal opinion is, I do not believe our school board has been good stewards of the taxpayers' money.
Agreed.
We are running a system in this school, in this city, that has an overall student-to-teacher ratio of thirteen to one. A hundred and seventy-two teachers divided by twenty-two hundred and fifty students is a thirteen to one ratio. I challenge you to find another school locality that is running such a number. I wanna see it, I don't think it exists. Also, the school system has known for a long time that it has had the capacity to close a school and consolidate and still have room to grow for expansion, and they have chosen not to do it.
That's not true, Mr. Wingard.
Yes, it is.
It's not true.
I mentioned it last year, so you've known for a year since, since this time.
Absolutely, and, and it's not true, I told you then, I'll tell you now, that's not true.
Last year, you had the capacity of growth if you consolidated with thirteen additional students coming in the system. This year, it's closer to twenty. I asked you the numbers the last time we had a meeting, so we don't have families moving into this city, we've got families moving out.
But you're talking about changing our grade configurations to where all of our elementary schools would not be accredited, sir. And that, that is a, is a liability to this city more than anything that we've talked about tonight.
Okay, that's a not, that, that is a decision the school board has made. And you made a comment tonight, got a little huffy and told us, and reminded us that we don't have any say-so on what the school system does with the money. You are absolutely correct on that, but what we do have control over is your budget. How much are we gonna fund you? So we are a partnership in the sense of the word, and you have to work with us, and we have to work with you. It's not that we're against the students, it's not that we're against the teachers. The, the, the bottom line is, we're for this city, and we are gonna survive this debt. And you're gonna have skin in the game, everybody in this room is gonna have skin in the game, everybody on this council's gonna have skin on the game, and every taxpayer and person that's inside this city. And your school board came to us with a proposal. You tell us we don't have any authority to say what you do with that money, but then we tell you we're gonna cut you a marginal three hundred thousand dollars, and then you stand before us as if we don't even have the right to do that. Because when we say we're going to, then the emails shoot off, the hype, the misconceptions of what's going on, and rallying the troops. We have the overall best interest of this city at heart, not one entity, but the survival of all. And three hundred thousand out of your budget is not that substantial. And the cuts that you requested, and the emails that you sent out of the doom and gloom that it was gonna cause, will all fall on the school system and what they choose to cut. And even tonight, everything you mentioned cutting was on the bottom, where all the work gets done, not the top. That's a decision your school board will make if and when you have to make adjustments. Are you gonna take the workers and kick them to the curb? Or are you gonna take and trim off the top?
We're, we're not, first of all...
That's your decision.
We're not kicking anybody to the curb.
But I've looked at your budget, and I would love to have a one-on-one with you and your school board, because it is out of tilt. And that's my position.
So I will just tell you, Mr. Wingard, whenever a public body makes decisions, they're held accountable for that decision. And if that means that people fill up a council room to express their opinion, that's not called irresponsibility, that's called democracy, sir.
No, but you don't holler fire.
And he hollered fire.
Absolutely didn't holler fire.
You hollered fire.
Every person that sent me emails and calls said, how dare I cut five hundred and some thousand dollars from your budget.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So it was apparently not made clear that two forty-seven was never part of the school operation.
Absolutely told them, in addition to the two forty-eight that we offered, there was a three hundred dollar recommended reduction.
People that called me didn't get the message, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I'll just reiterate what Kevin said a little bit differently. There, there, there was no, that, there, there was no reason for, for what transpired over the last month, right? We're doing the best we can to try to look at this budget, look at it reasonable, look at it in detail. And to, to send out emails and try to call fire, like he says, that, we, we don't need to operate that way. That's not the mode we're in. I mean, we're all adults here, we can, we can talk about it, we're not gonna agree with you potentially, but we can work it, we can work through it. But to do it that way is not the way to go about it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll remind you, I tried to contact you before that went out, tried, tried to work it out with the city manager before that happened, had no luck. I tried to work it out through the normal means, and that did not, so I had to, uh, had to make sure that our teachers and our parents, our stakeholders, were aware of the decisions that were being made. You didn't return my phone call, sir, the city manager told me that it was, the decision was already made.
And I told you in the hallway, let me speak clear, I told you in the hallway that that's not the way I work, right? I was busy, I was in meetings the entire weekend, supporting veterans of the military, by the way, all right?
Thank you.
In Washington, DC, so I couldn't accept a phone call, right? I had real things I was trying to get done. So I don't micromanage and, and manage the city day-to-day, the city manager does. So he's the one you need to talk to, not try to call me or text me or get ahold of me, I'm not the guy.
Well, when I talk...
I'm just one of five up here.
When I talked to the city manager, he informed me at that time that council, in the two-on-two meetings that y'all had, were resolute behind this, and that he had no control over doing that. That was the discussion that we had.
We definitely need to do better next time.
Resolute behind what, help me here, I'm not sure.
The reduction of the three hundred thousand dollars from our appropriation request.
Okay, I, I agree with that, and it was two-two-one, it wasn't, uh, uh, two and two, it was two-two and one, and, uh, yeah, we've been pretty resolute about it. There's been discussions up here, by the way, of closing Highland View School, significant discussions. Significant discussions. And I personally think if we're really truly partners, then we close that school. We consolidate now, we save money now, and the school board, I mean, the school system would move the students. There's not that many. And ultimately, the savings, we could shut down and close down Highland View, maybe destroy the building site there and so, as opposed to leaving another vacant building in this city. And potentially save, in the next few years, rather than worrying about the $300,000 now, we could potentially save enough money to get a school.
No, sir, the savings for closing Highland View, regardless of the impact that it has on the other schools and the fact that we would still have a majority of our students and buildings that were built during the Harry Truman administration would only be $250,000 annually. And therefore, in my opinion, that does not, that does not meet the standard for us closing that school because of the impact it would have, that every elementary school that we'd have, based on current numbers, would be not fully accredited.
Well, that's your perspective, and I gather that. But, you know, there's nothing that says that... I've been in Stonewall. It seems to be a pretty good building. I've been actually in Washington Lee a little bit, and it looks like a pretty good building. But, you know, again, I would suggest to you that Americans used to be better educated than they are today when they actually were 1 through 10 grades in a one-roomed schoolhouse. And the kids actually had to really walk through snow and so forth, rather than get busts from the front of their house to the school, okay? And they wanted to learn then. So, you know, you talk about accreditation, you know, that's a good talking point, a good bullet point for you to speak about as superintendent. But I suggest that if you all really were partners, you would look into that as opposed to suggesting a new school at this point in time. But that's just me. That's my opinion.
I will say that, well, I won't say that.
Good.
I'll just say, as far as closing Highland View, I mean, I've heard that discussion. And what I would caution with that is, what's gonna be the cost to council? Because when they close that school, that becomes our building. And I can tell you what will happen up there. Not just, we will probably, if we're smart, come up with enough money to tear that building down as quickly as possible, which we don't even have. But if not, that building is gonna be the detriment of that neighborhood if it sits there empty.
I agree with that.
I can tell you that.
We don't need to keep it empty. I don't think we need to keep it.
But if they follow your recommendation, we don't have enough time to plan to put anything in there. That's one of the things I think with...
Nothing can be done this coming year. We're at the end. We're at the beginning of a new year. What we've been talking about for the last half hours, an hour, is stuff we need to do, but not this year. It's not gonna happen. There isn't enough time. But these studies and what have you can be made in a couple of years. Who knows if these things are rocking and rolling at the fall downtown?
Right. And if we keep doing the right thing, we will be in a position to support school construction. And I'm telling you, this council, we've already talked about it. We're gonna set up restricted accounts. And one is gonna be a restricted school fund account. And as money becomes available, we're gonna slide it over, and it's gonna stay there for what the school needs going forward, because that's something the city's never done. They've never set up a restricted capital account, so when you need a new fire engine or something, it's there. They've never set up a restricted capital account for the school system. None of that was ever done. So, here we are. We've maxed out our credit cards. We've not saved any money, and we've not got any money sitting aside for any capital. Wow. Look what got us there. What'll get you there is not asking all the hard questions, debating it really tough, and then walking away with, as a friend the next day, but still getting the job done, right? So, we're trying to make sure we get the job done, right? And so, there's ways to put that money aside. It's all about timing. We wanna do that. But we gotta, we gotta challenge you to look at it from a bunch of different ways. So, I wanna say one more thing. When I looked at that budget line item, I came to the same conclusions he did. Because I look at those budget line items from a perspective of, you know, if this was my business, what does this look like? And I went, "Wow." There's a reason we don't have an assistant city manager sitting here, oh, by the way. We only got one of them. There's a reason we don't have a city attorney sitting there, by the way. We only got one of them, right? We did that for a reason. You know what? To save money, because we can't afford it, right? So, when I look at the school budget, I don't see that. I see all those opportunities sitting there. So, assistance here, you gotta, you gotta put the money to the teachers first and foremost. You don't, you can't have all the overhead structure. But I understand what got us here. I really do. I understand. We had population up here. We had a bigger city. We had all these schools, and it went like this. And now we woke up, and here we are, right?
Central office has been reduced. We have no elementary assistant principals. I will say that you may have saved enough money tonight by not running the air conditioning to make a payment, because I'm gonna have to change shirts here in just a second. But I would also say, and your challenge is accepted, and I've accepted every challenge that this council, my board has provided to me. I agree with everything you said. We need to dig in to these proposals. We need to look at them very closely. We need to make a determination, our board first, city council second, to whether this is a project that we need to proceed. But it's not something that needs to be made before the process even begins. We're at the very beginning of this process. And if we get to the point where it comes time for council to make a decision, and that council votes no, that ends that discussion. I will tell you, Mr. Mupher, I agree completely. Timing is right. Our economy is improving locally, to some extent nationally, to a greater extent. Interest rates are at a good point, and people are willing to invest money. If you would've told us just a couple of years ago that there was gonna be two, at least two different investor groups who wanted to invest money in Bristol, knowing everything that they had looming ahead of them, that probably wouldn't have happened. However, the timing is right now, and we have two very significant investor groups who want to bring their money and spend it in Bristol, which will also generate revenue, because we'll have people here that are working on the building. They'll be buying supplies and products from this area. The workers will be spending their money at the convenience stores, restaurants, and gas stations. And an economic develop, any research that you look at says a good economic development plan includes great schools. And if you wanna bring a business in to look at a place to come, and they wanna tour a school, I can't take them to an elementary school that is younger than 45 years old. That's not gonna impress anybody as they're coming into the city of Bristol. I'll also say, as you're talking about decisions that are made, about, I mean, y'all hired somebody for $90,000 to be an economic developer who was only gonna be a part-time employee. I know he's no longer there. But, I mean, as you're talking about those types of decisions at the top, that also has an impact on the decisions.
Bad decision. Bad decision.
But he was a contract employee.
Yeah, we're done with that. Bad decision, you're right. Absolutely bad decision.
So, I'm just saying...
But you're making some representations about interest rates and so forth going down or being favorable. No, they're not. They're not favorable at all, okay? Just so you get it. There's a 10-year yield curve that is 3.07. It was 3.12 last week. There's almost an inversion between a 30-year T bond and a 10-year. If there's an inversion, a recession has followed every time there's been an inversion of those two bond funds. So, you know, and you look at the economy in general, there's 90-some million Americans out of the workforce. They talk about low unemployment. I don't know, you know, I guess you could count waitress jobs and so forth and so on. But there's not good-paying jobs. There's a void in good-paying jobs, particularly in this region. So, to sit there and say, unless you're an economist, to sit there and say that we have favorable rates on interest is not right. It's something, obviously, that you haven't tracked and so forth and so on.
I said that, I meant to say, and if I said interest rates are favorable, what I said is investing is favorable right now because of the economy. We have two renowned investing firms that want to invest in our city and the school with an alternative financing model. That's all I'm saying. I don't know that that was true two years ago, and I don't know if it'll be true two years in the future.
What they're gonna do, assuming that happens, they're gonna basically go out here on the market, and they're gonna sell them out as bonds and so forth and so on to people to fund it. That's what's gonna happen. And they're gonna make a lot of profit. They're gonna basically sell tax notes and so forth. And they're gonna make their money that way, and Bristol's gonna be stuck with the debt. So, they have no particular interest here, other than the fact that they're gonna make money.
Oh, yeah.
And they're gonna make money on basically selling tax notes and so forth.
They wanna do it in two years or three years as well.
They're gonna make their bank real quick, just like that housing project near...
People wanna make money, loaning it are not gonna go away.
No, they're not. No, anybody that's gonna get in something like that, they know the game, and they're prepared to play the game.
Well, I'll just tell you, you gotta be careful saying the economy's really good right now. The private sector will not line up and tell you that. The private sector will tell you that things in certain areas are moving in the right direction. But there is more risk today than there was three years ago. So, we are not anywhere close to a healthy economic growth pattern, not anywhere close. So, it's kind of, it's, again, wait and see. Gotta be careful committing, because it could downturn just like that. That's how if it is right now.
That's how fast it's gone up.
That's right.
It could go down just as fast.
So, the last thing I wanna say is, we're seeing the population of students go down. Is that trend gonna continue?
So, let me address that. And I think I've addressed this at council before. Last year, right before I came to Bristol in Norton, we had a severe decline in student population in the coalfields, because several coal mines closed. When we came back to school in August, we had high percentages, not like, you know, 30 kids that were gone. We had high percentages of students that were no longer there. As you know, state funding's based on enrollment. We couldn't make up those losses in state enrollment, because we started, for example, in Norton, we lost 60 kids out of 800 kids. I mean, you can do the math pretty quick and see what an impact that was gonna have. So, we went, we got together as a coalfield coalition, and we got enrollment loss money added back to the state budget. In order to get that money, you had to have over the last 10, you had to be a division smaller than 10,000. You had to, over the last 10 years, had a decline of 10% enrollment in order to even be eligible for enrollment loss money. Bristol didn't meet that requirement. So, is our enrollment going down? Absolutely. Is it going down in proportion to what other divisions in southwest Virginia and southside Virginia are going down? Absolutely not. Is that population changing? Mr. Wingard's made this point very often. Yes, our population is changing. But even the census data, even though it is down, it's not a huge percentage that that population is down. And our enrollment is not a huge percentage that is down.
The fertility rate in this country is dropping precipitously. The only group that I'm aware of that is growing is among the Muslim population. So, you know, every other demographic but that group is dropping. So, the answer to the question is, long-term, it's gonna continue to go down, not up. And, you know, that is statistical data. Perhaps you didn't read that, but, you know, an answer to the mayor's question, it's going down. And it's not just going to go up in the city of Bristol, Virginia. It's just not gonna go up in the city of Bristol, Virginia. It's going to do what every other jurisdiction does. It's going to continue to go down, except for one demographic, one, okay?
So, as you challenged me, Mr. Mayor, I think this city council can affect that by attracting... The answer to all of these questions, in my opinion, are jobs. And if we can do a good job of attracting jobs, I think that we'll see a huge turnaround in our city. And I think that as a school system, we can be a great partner in that endeavor as well.
I agree with you, but you gotta plan for what you're seeing in front of you. So, the trend is down. It's clear the trend's down.
Yeah, slightly down for enrollment.
So, when you take on a big project like the school, you gotta plan for that trend. You gotta project that, look out five years, eight years, 10 years. What if it continues down at 2% a year, and you end up with 1,400 students when you wake up 12 years from now?
Build a smaller school at that time.
So, that's why you can't ignore that trend. Because our trend has been at the peak, you know, probably 3,000, and now we're down to 2,200, going south of 2,000. Where's it gonna, where's it gonna bottom out before it actually turns the other way, right? So, the demographics is shifting, right?
I can provide from Weldon Cooper, which is at the UVA Center. I can provide a long-term enrollment projection if that's would... But I will also remind you, Mr. Mupher, in a previous conversation that you and I had, as we were talking about building this new school, you wanted to be sure that we build it big enough that it would take growth, because that was the goal of this council, was to grow our city. And we didn't wanna build a school that couldn't house a population growth if we had that in the future. That was a conversation you and I had earlier.
Yeah, you don't wanna box yourself in. You gotta manage the project from the standpoint of, what's it look like five years from now? Do I have the room for growth, yes or no? Am I gonna be overpopulated, underpopulated? So, you gotta run all those numbers. That's why it's gotta be studied in a lot of detail, right? I know you're tired.
No, I'm just, I feel the air.
It feels better, doesn't it?
I feel the air.
Anything else you wanna add before?
No, I'm glad to answer those questions. Mr. Wingard, if you'd like to meet with me personally, I'd love to go through that budget with you. Same is true for anybody here. We don't always agree, but I do believe, I do believe that this council, our school board, this city manager, and our superintendent all have Bristol's best interests in heart. It just so happens that my particular main area of interest is our schools. And until this school board fires me from that position, I'm gonna do everything that I can to advocate for the very best that I can for our students, our staff, and our schools. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, a couple of people have signed up for public comment. I'll mark Dr. Perrigan off the list, I think, since she just went. Okay. Paul Conco?
Hi, thank you. My name is Paul Conco. I reside on Long Crescent Drive in Bristol, Virginia. I serve as Chair of the Industrial Development Authority, though my remarks are not fully in that capacity. I understand the difficulty in constructing budgets with limited resources. It's not an easy job, and I thank each of you for your time, effort, and passion that you've put into that responsibility. I do, however, want to bring to your attention three concerns. Number one, I am pleased that this budget provides funding for Believe in Bristol. It is an organization that greatly enhances our downtown businesses and activities. However, the lack of funding for Discover Bristol, the marketing arm of our Chamber of Commerce, is, in my view, short-sighted. Discover Bristol markets our area as a tourism destination and helps many businesses, both large and small, that rely on tourism dollars. Tourists sleep in our hotel rooms, eat in our restaurants, visit our museum, and pay taxes to support this city and the jobs created around tourism. What small business would say to itself? I need to increase my revenue. I know what I'll do. I'll cut my advertising. That should help. That is just not logical. Funding to market Bristol has gone from $175,000 to $100,000 to this current proposal of $50,000. It takes years to build up tourism, to get on the tour bus schedules, to become known as a tourist destination. The result of less advertising may not show up immediately, but it will prove in the very near future to have a detrimental effect on tourism as well as result in lower tax revenue for this city. Let me quote from the Bristol Herald Courier. Quote, "Investing in tourism impacts more than the city council takes into account. It brings national and international visitors to existing businesses. It enhances appeal for prospective businesses. It creates jobs. It helps introduce millions of dollars of new revenue into our local economy. It allows our local culture and quality of life to thrive." End quote. Discover Bristol is an investment that yields much more than it costs. Number two, the decision about a new school is a very difficult and complex one. I do not have enough information or understanding at this point of the various plans. I have, however, asked the same question at school board meetings I have attended and to the superintendent. What will happen to the empty school buildings if you consolidate and build a new school? The answer is, not our worry. The buildings belong to the city. I contend that these buildings need to be part of the planning process. The buildings may be future opportunities, but will certainly be current liabilities. We all know one important fact. Old, empty buildings cost money. Even a tear down of a building is expensive. I would like to see what to do with the former schools a part of the budget planning process, not an afterthought. And finally, number three, I believe in conservative revenue projections to bill budgets. However, it is my understanding that this budget does not take into account that the Hotel Bristol will be open the second half of the budget year. These new lodging taxes should go to help fully fund Discover Bristol. This budget... Give me a Nancy Marney, 30 seconds, I'll be done. This budget also does not take into account American merchant opening the second half of the year and the expensive machines that have been ordered and are on their way, and the hiring American merchant will do. I also believe that this budget does not take into account the revenue and jobs created by Hobby Lobby. Construction, we can all see, and should open well before the end of the year. These new revenues should be considered, whether it be for marketing tourism, hiring police, funding schools, or paying off debt. Thank you for listening, and thank you for the many hours of work you have spent in trying to improve and grow Bristol and this region. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conco.
All right, next person on the list for agenda item number one was Courtney, education.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm not gonna speak at length. I just wanted the opportunity to offer to you the availability of my time to meet on my budget for Discover Bristol. I made a presentation here in March. I have, since then, we were put into the budget at $100,000. I have, since then, we were put into the budget at a hundred thousand dollars, and I haven't had any formal interaction with this council since the reduction or even the initial proposed budget. So I would love that opportunity, and that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'll just make a couple comments on both of those public comments. The city manager's door is open, so if you want to set up a meeting, please call Randy, set it up, go over any additional detailed budget items you think you need to for Discover Bristol, or Mr. Conco's statements, you know, the tourism stuff, you know, come to, come to Randy with numbers and, and show him what you're talking about so he can understand it, because we're relying on his recommendations. So don't be bashful, get in front of the city manager and go through it in detail, and then we'll go from there. With that said, I'll say that we've tried to challenge all the outside organizations that the city is not in a position to just open the checkbook. So we're going to put a policy together, we're, we're going to try to be a little bit more rigid with this, but we're going to put a policy together that says we've got an application process, and we're going to try to make it more user-friendly but more direct value back to the city, so to speak. So what's the project? How much money do you need? How exactly are you going to spend those dollars? What's the city going to get back from that, you know, dollar outlay? And that's the kind of stuff this council wants to see, because we want to make sure that every dollar, every taxpayer dollar we're spending, we're spending it for the right reasons. So if you can go out and come back with direct decision-making market research, as an example, of how a person decides to stay at the Holiday Inn at exit five or at the Fairfield Inn at exit seven, and we got to spend, you know, eighty thousand dollars to up that occupancy rate by, you know, twenty percent, and that occupancy rate drives back enough tax revenues to, to pay for itself, we're all ears. So that's what we're after. We're after to make sure that the money spent is bringing the value back to the city. And I've tried to personally do my own market research, so I, I travel a lot, and I talk to a lot of people that travel tremendously. How do you make your decision on where to stay? You know, you'd be surprised the answer you get, right? How do you think people make a decision on where to stay? Well, most people are coming down the interstate, it's a, it's just an immediate decision because they need a room. So they see the advertisements on the transportation blue signs, they see the exit, they see the hotel. A lot of people make a, just a random quick decision because they need a hotel room. Business, business people that make decisions, right, know where they're going, so they're looking for a hotel close to where the airport is or close to where their business meeting is. So they're not necessarily looking at, you know, magazines and advertisements and other places. They, they Google, they'll, they'll get on, you know.
Go to the corporate website, like Hilton or whatever.
Yeah, the voted corporate website, or, or they make decisions based on their Hilton card. A lot, a lot of, a lot of salespeople, a lot of people travel based on their Hilton or their Holiday Inn card. So what we need to figure out is how do we connect the decision that a person makes to stay in a hotel or to go to somewhere to eat? What's driving that decision? Let's make sure we're spending the money to drive that decision up, because when you look at the lodging taxes as an example, we've got a law from about November through March, there's a definite trough in, in people staying in hotels, right? It's the wintertime, right? Makes sense, right? Picks up in March, starts growing through the summertime. Okay, so the summertime is probably the time where it's already, it already is what it is. You're not going to impact that as much, but you can definitely impact that trough. So what can we do to raise the, raise the November to March lodging occupancy? What, what have we not thought of to spend some money, talk to the business owners of the hotels, right, to drive that November to March occupancy up? You know, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for, yeah, put more dollars out there, but make sure we get a return on that, and we're, we're driving the right behavior. So as long as that's done right, I think everybody's, everybody's all ears. So with that, we'll move on to council comments or a motion on the first reading.
Move that we have the first reading of the budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
Now, second.
There's a motion by Mr. Hubbard and a second by Mr. Wingard, and a council discussion.
I, I certainly think we need to approve this. I think it's been a good effort by, on the part of the, our, our staff, and I commend Is it perfect? No. But is it, is it taking into account our current situation? I think it does. And, you know, wish we had more funds, wish we had a lot of things, but we don't, and, you know, God willing, the austerity that we're doing, really, I hope it pays off down the road for the future of Bristol. I think it will, and it's painful tonight, but that's my comment.
This is my fourth or fifth budget, and I've never liked any of them. So, I mean, that's the nature of the beast. It's all compromise all over the place. I mean, it's not like we can just ramrod whatever numbers we want. We can't. It's all compromise, and I hated every budget, but I still vote for them because we got to have a budget. That's the law.
The state doesn't have to, but we, we have to.
Yeah, the state's exempt.
Or do you have other councils?
I, I just want to say, I want to thank the city manager and the CFO, because they put in countless hours on this, and they done a fabulous job presenting us this budget for us to only have a few tweaks the way that we did. I mean, that speaks great volumes. They're fully aware of the situation the city's facing, and I just can't give them enough praise for what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I mean, like everybody else, I will thank y'all for the time and effort. This is not easy to, what y'all presented us with, and I think, as I said then, you know, it, it's difficult, because anytime you want to make a change, you got to do that without creating additional problems. With that said, I, I do wish that we would consider funding the schools, because I think, you know, is, both short and long-term, I think this is going to have an impact. You know, I don't, I see that more as an investment, and I know we've had a lot of discussion here. The one that I really don't understand is why we're cutting funding to tourism promotion when we need to rely on those revenues as well. So in my mind, there are things that we need to, you know, I'm not saying it's easy, but I think we need to prioritize and make those investments, because both of those will produce returns in the short term and the long term, and I think by cutting this, you know, we're setting ourselves up for some difficulties down the road.
All right, with that said, the last couple comments I'll make is, it was an arduous process. The city manager and the CFO and all the department heads went through a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of tough discussions. These budget processes aren't easy. They're never going to be easy until you got plenty of money to deal with and lots of room to maneuver, and then they become pretty easy, I suppose. That's when you can start to get yourself back in trouble. But with that said, I, I will say that we're, we're going to try to learn from this, this year's process. We want to try to get better every year at this, right? I don't think we started soon enough this year. I think that's just based on the folks up here and a little bit of inexperience, the time it takes to get through some of these discussions. So we're going to challenge the city manager and the CFO to, you know, put together a good quarterly look after we get two or three months under our belt. Let's talk about where we are with all these budgets. Is anything maneuvering in a place that we don't like, or it's going in the right direction? Take another look after three months and start almost to the point of finalizing what we're looking at for the next budget cycle before we end the year and go into the holidays. We, we should have a pretty good idea of how things are trending, how expenses are looking, how revenues are trending, to get a take on, were we right? Were we wrong? Did we miss it? How did we miss it? And then go from there to try to have some more discussions about what we're looking forward, so that there's more discussion, we give ourselves more time from January through the Maytime period for these tough discussions, so we can kind of work through this a little bit more productive.
Well, I would just like to caution council that getting too early, you can't get favorable revenue guidance, because you would just mention the trough in November through December. So if you're basing your budget on that trough, and then you come to summer and boom, so yes, I think earlier, maybe a couple of weeks, I wouldn't get too much earlier, just simply because of the nature of this beast. It's great one month, terrible the next, go way up for two months, go way down for two months, and it all depends on state's revenue flows. I mean, it's just, it's impossible, let's put it that way.
Plus, if you're looking in January, you're really projecting out eighteen months, and we talked about the economy, I mean, that's pretty, the closer you get to, to May and June, the more comfortable, your, your projections are a shorter timeframe, so it's.
More than having it finalized by May is certainly earlier than it's ever been done.
Yeah, really? This is the earliest I've seen it.
This, this one's earlier too, yeah, than the, at least the ones I'm aware of. But in any event, a couple of weeks more in the early stages, it's, I think it's safe. But any more than that, I believe you're getting into trouble on your projection front for revenues.
Or anything else from council? All right, with that, please call the roll.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Our reading of the ordinance?
Budget ordinance for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, making general fund, capital project fund, school operating fund, school textbook fund, school food service fund, school construction capital projects fund, school local capital projects fund, and solid waste disposal enterprise fund appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand eighteen, and ending July, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, in the following amounts. General fund, fifty-one million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Capital project fund, eleven million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. School operating fund, twenty-six million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. School textbook fund, six hundred and fifteen thousand, thirty-two dollars. School food service fund, one million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. School construction capital projects fund, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. School local capital projects fund, two hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. Solid waste disposal enterprise fund, five million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And regulating payments out of the city treasury and also fixing the tax rate on real and personal property for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Section one, that the amounts named herein aggregating fifty-one million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars are hereby appropriated from the general fund for the use of the several departments of the city government for the fiscal year beginning July two thousand eighteen and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as the same is set forth in the budget adopted pursuant to section three hereof. That the amounts named herein aggregating eleven million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars are hereby appropriated from the capital project fund for the use of the several departments of the city government for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as set forth in the budget adopted pursuant to section three hereof. That the amounts named herein aggregating five million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars are hereby appropriated from the solid waste disposal fund for the use of solid waste disposal and collection operations for the two thousand nineteen fiscal year. That the amounts named herein aggregating twenty-nine million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars are hereby appropriated from the school funds for the use of general operations, textbook, food service and capital projects for the two thousand nineteen fiscal year. Section two, that the rate of taxation on real, real estate property be fixed at one dollar, seventeen cents on the hundred dollars assessed valuation for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. That the tax rate of, that the rate of taxation on personal property for automobiles, trucks, motorcycles and trailers be fixed at two dollars and sixty cents on the hundred dollars assessed valuation for the fiscal year beginning July two thousand eighteen and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and an assessment ratio of one hundred percent. The rate of taxation for machine tools and all other personal property be fixed at seven dollars on the hundred dollars assessed valuation for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and an assessment ratio of twelve percent. This is in order to secure the amount necessary to carry out the provisions of this budget. Section three, that the annual budget heretofore presented to the city council by the city manager as the same has been amended in the various workshops of the city council, and as the same is in its final form attached heretofore, is hereby adopted by city council and incorporated in this budget ordinance by reference pursuant to section ten point oh four of the city charter. That the salaries, wages and allowances set out in the budget statement and adopted by city council for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, be, and they are hereby authorized and fixed as the maximum allowance to be allowed, officers and employees for the services rendered, unless otherwise provided by ordinance, provided, however, that the city manager is authorized to make such rearrangement of positions in the departments of the city as may best meet the needs and interests of the city in the transfer of parts of salaries from one department to another when extra work or personnel are transferred from one department to another. Section four, upon the recommendation of the city manager and approval of the city council, the chief financial officer may thereafter transfer a balance appropriated but unused for one purpose for the current fiscal year to another purpose or object for which the appropriations for said purpose or object for the current year have proven insufficient, even though that requires transferring said funds from one department of the city to another. The city manager may transfer funds appropriated for contingency purposes to other departments as the city manager deems necessary. The chief financial officer may, upon authorization of the city manager, transfer funds between line items appropriated within the same department or office to meet unexpected obligations within the same department or office. Section five, if the timing of receipt of revenues in the course of the fiscal year requires the borrowing of money to support expenditures within the appropriations herein, authorize in anticipation of receipt of future revenues, it is hereby authorized that the city may issue promissory note or notes from time to time during the fiscal year and may borrow and re-borrow it thereunder so long as at no time shall the aggregate principal amount of all notes outstanding exceed two million dollars. Each and all of said notes shall have a maturity date no later than one year from the date of issue. Each and all such notes shall be payable exclusively from the taxes and revenues for the city of Bristol, Virginia. This note or notes of the city shall be backed by the full faith and credit of the city and shall be general obligation bonds. This ordinance shall take effect July one, two thousand eighteen, the best interest of the city requiring it.
All right, moving on to.
We have a recess.
Two hours and five minutes.
All right, so we'll take a, we'll take a.
Three-hour recess.
We'll take a ten-minute recess, be back here at eight fifteen.
Great, thank you.
So we'll be moving on to item number two on the agenda. This item is to consider the reading of an ordinance to tran, or consider the second reading of an ordinance to transfer the franchise agreement from BBU to Sunset Fiber LLC by caption only. Staff report.
Counsel, this is the transfer agreement that was brought forth at a called meeting last week on May the fifteenth. In order for Sunset Digital to complete the purchase of OptiNet from BBU, they need to have the, the authority to operate within the city of Bristol under the franchise agreement. And it was passed last week, I think, five to zero, and I'm just requesting council move to approve the second reading and adopting the ordinance.
I don't see anybody signed up for public comment on this item, so I need a council motion and a second.
Move we have second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Hartley, second, and Mr. Wingard.
Maybe if you turn on your mic, Winnie.
I'm sorry. Hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Counsel, a session. Okay. All right, please call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. Reading of the ordinance?
Ordinance to transfer a franchise agreement from Bristol, Virginia Utilities Board now be BBU authority to Sunset Digital Communications, DBA, Sunset Fiber LLC upon the closing of the transaction.
Okay, now I need a council motion, a second, for adoption of the ordinance.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Motion of Mr. Fleener.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hubbard. Please call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, item three, consider public hearing regarding fiscal year eighteen nineteen, community development grant and home allocations. So hereby open the open public hearing. We've got some people, I think, signed up for this. Heather Lawson?
We need a staff comment, staff comment first.
Oh, okay. Well, staff comment was written as, I'm sorry, you're right. I, I got it out of order, you're right. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Long day.
Good evening, and I'll try to be brief. Each year, the city of Bristol is a recipient of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. This funding is awarded without competition to entitlement cities across the nation, which includes the city of Bristol. HUD provides this entitlement amount based on a nationwide formula which uses several objective measures of community needs, including the extent of poverty population, housing overcrowding, age of housing and population growth lag compared to other urban areas. This funding is to be used principally to benefit low to moderate income individuals residing in the city. It can be used to develop or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities. This funding is dispersed through the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG. This year's CDBG allocation totals two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is a fifteen percent increase from last year, and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents in home funds. This is a thirty-seven percent increase from last year. These are, um, home funds are administered through the Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium, of which Bristol is a member. Home funds are used for first-time home ownership and major housing rehab. Each year, the city must develop an annual action plan that provides a blueprint to HUD as to how the city will spend its CDBG funding. The annual action plan is developed by the city's Department of Community and Economic Development, and is based upon identified needs of its low-income residents within the city. All activities included must be part of the city's CDBG comprehensive plan that is established every five years, which outlines the city's goals and is submitted to HUD. This year's allocation has been distributed, as noted on the PowerPoint, compliant with certain parameters set by HUD. Those who received the agenda item summary will note that we did not know the exact amount of our allocation at the time it was developed, and numbers were estimated based on last year's allocation. We now know our, our actual allocation, and these numbers are now reflected on the PowerPoint. Eligible activities include public service projects, which are provided through our local community agencies, to Bristol residents. These agencies completed competitive applications for CDBG funding in March. Staff has posted its first public notice and public comment period to provide citizens with the opportunity to participate in the development of needs and review the proposed activities. After public comments are heard, staff requests a mayor's subcommittee be formed to review this year's CDBG Annual Action Plan and recommended activities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now I can go to public comment. All right, first person up was Heather Lawson.
Thank you. Heather Lawson, I'm from Girls Incorporated here in Bristol. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share a little bit about Girls Incorporated with you. We are a program-based after-school and summer center for girls ages five to eighteen. We've been serving the Bristol community since nineteen fifty. Thank you for considering support of Girls Inc. with your community block grant funds. We currently have a hundred and fifty girls enroll for our summer program, which starts on Tuesday. We are also enrolling new girls daily. Our program is beneficial to the community for many reasons. We provide affordable childcare. We focus our programming on the needs of the community. Some of the programs we implement here in Bristol are our peer-based drug prevention program, our abstinence-based pregnancy prevention program, an in-depth economic literacy program, and lately we've added a strong self-esteem and bullying program, as we've seen the need grow here in our community. The funds you provide will strengthen our programs and allow us to continue teaching the girls of our community how to make positive choices and set them on a path to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person, Lisa Porter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Lisa Porter, Executive Director and CEO of the Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority is celebrating its eightieth anniversary this year. We've been serving Bristol since nineteen thirty-eight. We have applied for CDBG funding this year to assist us with a new partnership. We are partnering with the Veritas Adult Drug Court here in Bristol, under the direction of the Honorable Judge Johnson, to provide housing for clients of the Drug Court program. Five years ago, the Housing Authority purchased a large, single-family home from Virginia Intermont College, with the intent to provide student housing. The home was divided into six individual apartments prior to the purchase. Once the college ceased to operate, we began renting the units on the private market. Now, we would like to use this property to provide a benefit to the community with this new partnership. The home was built in nineteen eleven, and it's located on Moore Street. We have made thirty-eight thousand dollars in repairs since the purchase in two thousand thirteen. However, most of these repairs were to the exterior and to structural items. We now need to make interior improvements, including electrical upgrades. Drug Court participants will provide in-kind labor for cosmetic improvements by painting, cleaning, and assisting with grounds upkeep. BRHA will provide supplies for this in-kind contribution. We are requesting ten thousand dollars for electrical upgrades to the home, so that we can pro- provide housing to an estimated eight to fifteen participants per year. The Drug Court program provides a wonder- wonderful service for our community by giving offenders who qualify a chance to turn their lives around. The program provides a process to help with reintegration, and it has seen more than thirty clients graduate since two thousand nine. Finding and securing adequate housing is chief among the re-entry challenges that participants face. Securing employment, maintaining sobriety, or fulfilling supervision standards are extremely difficult without stable housing. BRHA wants to work with the Veritas Adult Drug Court program to provide a service to the community, and to make a positive impact on families and those in need. We are here to provide housing, and the Adult Drug Court has a housing need. It's a natural fit for us to provide this recovery housing with a new beginning on more. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I inquire her briefly? Um, is there going to be a supervisor, so to speak, in the, in the home? Um, or is it just going to be five or six individuals there, unmonitored and so forth and so on?
There is actually, um, an apartment in the basement area that we are proposing to turn into a common area where we can have counseling down there. So yes, there would be something on site.
Do you know if it's a two-hundred-and-twenty amp service, or is it a hundred-and-ten? Because you're talking about conversion of the whole electrical system.
We really need to rewire the entire house. It's one-ten right now.
One-ten?
Yes.
Makes it potentially a fire hazard.
Yes. It's an older home. It needs some work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next person, TJ DeWitt.
Thank you to the council. I'm the Director of the Jones Creativity Center at the Bristol Public Library, and we provide job readiness training, digital and computer literacy, and adult basic education to the public and to the city of Bristol. Uh, since its inception in nineteen eighty-seven, the Jones Creativity Center has assisted thousands of Bristol-area residents in meeting their goals of improving their lives and the lives of their families by assisting them to reach education goals, pursue secondary education and vocational training, obtain employment. CDBG funding uniquely enables the JCC to provide free, one-on-one, walk-in instruction in a computer lab to anyone with these kind of needs, six days a week, uh, for forty-seven hours total per week. Uh, last year, for example, uh, we served three hundred and twenty-four individuals. That's both Tennessee and Virginia. A hundred and thirty-one of those were, were served, were citizens of Bristol, Virginia. Um, that's uh, seven hundred and eighty-three attendance hours for Bristol, Virginia. Uh, and in Bristol, Virginia, uh, a hundred and nine of those were low-income, so about eighty-three percent of the people we served were, were low-income. Some of our accomplishments, uh, we had, uh, fourteen individuals receive job readiness training. Uh, we created thirty-six resumes. Uh, we gave computer instruction to seventy-two individuals, and, uh, we know of forty-nine individuals that found jobs after doing job searches through the JCC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, last person on this is Kathy Rourke.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Rourke, and I'm the Program Director for the Children's Advocacy Center of Highlands Community Services, which serves Bristol, Washington, and Smith Counties. Um, I want to thank this council, um, not this council specifically, all, um, but the, twenty years ago, we came before the city council with an idea that, um, to start the First Child Advocacy Center in Virginia, and since that time, our program has set the stage for that program to be replicated in sixteen other locations across, um, Virginia, and has, um, also codified changes across the state in how child abuse is investigated, prosecuted, and treated. Um, so we appreciate your continued support of the work that your, um, colleagues twenty years ago, um, saw fit to do. In, um, in the, in our past fiscal year, we have experienced explosive growth in the number of children, um, identified and served and treated for trauma associated with child abuse. Um, in last fiscal year, we provided services to a hundred and seventy-six new Bristol, Virginia victims. Um, that's one every two days. Um, seventy percent of these kids were less than age twelve, and about half of them were victims of sexual abuse, and ninety-two percent of them were victimized by a parent or relative or someone that they knew. The CAC provided a hundred and thirty-four specialized forensic interviews, um, for these victims at the request of law enforcement, um, Child Protective Services staff, and prosecutors from Bristol. The CAC's, um, has highly skilled forensic interviewing staff, um, that can, can do that work with kids in a private setting. They, the children, um, interact with one person, and the other people who need to hear that information, like our detectives and our, um, Child Protective Services, um, staff and prosecutors, can watch from another room. So a child is not having to talk about something that's very private and very traumatic in front of a whole panel of people. Together, we, our Bristol team, saw sixteen cases, um, uh, through the court process, and a hundred percent of those cases resulted in a successful conviction or plea agreement. In Bristol, Virginia, right now, for the last three years, there have been a hundred percent successful in conviction, um, uh, conviction and plea agreement rate for the cases that were, um, served by the CAC and its teams. Um, our request is ten thousand dollars from Community Development Block Grant, and that equals about fifty-seven dollars per child that we served last year. Um, it will support those forensic interviewing services, and our agency is the only source and location, um, for that service in, in the city. Um, there is a cost savings associated with doing business in that way, and, um, the Crimes Against Children Research Center at the University of New Hampshire says that your municipality saves twelve hundred dollars for every case the CAC, um, serves. And so last year, that was about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So we ask for a small commitment, um, and we appreciate the continued support.
Thank you. All right, that was the last person signed up for that item. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. On to item number four on the agenda.
Uh, council, I'm asking, uh, council to consider an amendment to the, um, Bristol Hotel Virginia LLC agreement that was signed. Um, the original date of that was on the fourteenth day of May of two thousand and fifteen. Uh, Hotel Bristol, as I call them, uh, they, um, approached me within the par- past three weeks about an extension for their, um, performance agreement. Their current performance agreement requires them to be open by June the thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen. And they need an additional six months. I think they've just had typical construction delays with a project of that magnitude. Um, and I'm requesting the council to, uh, approve this. It will not have any effect on any funding or any of the, um, no-net loss agreement and with any of the taxes. It's just simple, an extension for six months. Mr. McCall is here tonight, the developer, if you have any questions for him, but, um, at least from my understanding, it's, uh, typical construction delays that have occurred, and he just needs additional time. I think his hope, uh, best hope would be to be open by the race, uh, in order to get some folks in for the race weekend, but I think maybe more realistic it may be before Rhythm and Roots, before he gets open.
All right, thank you. Uh, no one signed up for this item for public comment, so it's a pleasure, council, on this item.
Move to allow the six-month extension.
Second.
I got a motion, Mr. Hubbard, to allow the extension, second. Mr. Flener, any council discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Flener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, item five, consider subordination agreement regarding four oh one Gordon Avenue LLC.
Uh, council, um, within the past, uh, week or so, um, JJ Gillenwater and Blair Jones, they approached me in regards to subordination agreement, uh, for four oh one Gordon Avenue. This is their Oakmont living facility that they have. And back on the twenty-first day of November of two thousand and fourteen, they entered into a performance agreement which required seven million dollars in capital, one hundred beds, fifty employees, to repay three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars in taxes and fees within five years from the date of the agreement. And on top of that, they, uh, paid one hundred thousand dollar down payment with twenty thousand dollars a year to be forgiven for a total of two hundred thousand dollars over five years of this agreement. What they are asking is for a subordination agreement. I think what they would like is for, uh, to be released from this performance agreement based on the investment that they have put into Oakmont. At this point, I think there are a little over ten million dollars in investment out there. Uh, they're building a new twenty-five thousand square foot facility for, uh, memory care, if I'm, if I'm mistaken. And I think there may be an additional four million dollars coming up after this, uh, gets involved. So they'll be looking at roughly a fifteen million dollar investment, um, in the very near future for that facility. It's, um, I'm assuming there'll be additional employees over the fifty that y'all have fifty-seven now, I believe, fifty, so there'll be an additional number of employees, twenty-four employees for that new facility that they'll have to hire. It'll be in addition, and real estate taxes for the city. I would ask the council to consider a subordination agreement. Um, however, there is not one in the packet. I think their funding, uh, relies upon getting the subordination agreement relatively quickly. I think their attorney may be working on that, or I can work with their attorney to get that done, so you don't have a true subordination agreement in front of you. I believe, um, they're working on getting some of that paperwork done, but potentially, knowing that they're going to continue to come back, knowing what they've done in the past with Quaker State, and I think the council also abolished the previous performance agreement a couple of months ago with Quaker State, um, if council seats fit, uh, make an appropriate motion for them at this time.
How, how much additional, uh, obligation is left in the agreement?
Right now, they owe an additional sixty thousand dollars. They have to stay open basically three additional years, uh, in order to pay off that, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the property. At the, at this point, they've paid roughly eighty, one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in taxes, so not quite half. Uh, I don't think they've, they may not have paid, I don't know, the upcoming June taxes that are due, so that would be an additional amount that they have paid on top of that. Uh, but uh, they also will be having twenty-four additional employees, plus basically they will double their capital investment within, I think, by the end of the year. Is that a fair statement?
Okay. All right, one person signed up, uh, Mr. Blair Jones.
Council, thank you. Um, I'm with four oh one Gordon Avenue, Oakmont, Gordon Park. Um, really, I was just here to address any questions that y'all may have. Otherwise, um, I really don't have anything else to say, except for the fact that I do have, actually, I do have one thing. I want to say that this council is more unified than I've seen in a long time, and it's, it's very optimistic as a business owner to see that going forward, because you all are making hard decisions, and I, I know that people here, that they're not happy about some of the decisions, and I really feel gratitude for you all having to make those hard decisions. We do it on a daily basis, and I just want to commend you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, you know, it's, it's, uh, refreshing to have a business that overachieves.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's what we kind of, gotta recruit some more of those type businesses. So after you get this project done, and, and, uh, it's all tied up and bowed up, then look at your next, uh, investment, and help us recruit some other business entrepreneurs like yourself that want to come in this community and overachieve, because that's what we gotta have. And I think it's folks like you that can help get out and talk to those folks, um, because we need everybody that's in the business world talking to folks, you know, what do you do, why? you do? Why don't you try to invest? Why don't you expand your business here? So any help you can give us in that would be appreciated. I think you guys are doing a great job.
Amen.
I think we'll consider definitely the subordination agreement. I think it's an easy one, and then relieving all the stuff that he talked about, we'll give the city attorney, I think, a chance to look at that in detail and let you guys go forward without any holdbacks from the city.
You all have done a heck of a job, and I echo what the mayor said. Realistically, you know, there's got to be, in following up what the mayor said, there's got to be some older people that have got some great business ties, because it's such a nice facility. So perhaps you all can talk to some of these older residents and say, hey, is there any, you know, you have some connections with manufacturing jobs. We need good-paying manufacturing jobs here is what we really need, y'all. I mean, we appreciate what you're doing, because you're, you know, you're taking care of the older population, which is getting more and more elderly as we speak. But, you know, come on, guys, help us figure it out.
And counsel, we'll gladly be ambassadors for you all. I mean, truly, we, I mean, we've had a great partnership with everything that we've done. And just to speak to your point, just, I don't want to labor too much, but we've brought in two residents that I know of. One came from Oak Ridge, and he was a professional, and he was moved here by his family. And the other person, she was a female that had some ties to the area, and she actually was neighbors with Clint Eastwood. So to be honest with you, we're bringing some other people in, so maybe we'll have some ideas at some point, and we're always looking, so.
Thank you.
If you get a Clint Eastwood movie going here, that'd be amazing.
Thank you all.
I'd just like an autograph. Is it possible to get an autograph and so forth as well?
Thank you all.
All right, so what's the pleasure of counsel on this item?
I make a motion we subordinate for 401 Gordon Avenue.
I second that.
I got a motion, I'm a Mr. Wingard, second, Mr. Hartley. Any counsel discussion? We're giving the...
I think the next time they come before us, we can probably consider forgetting the next subordination. Go ahead and let them off the hook.
Yep. All right, please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Montpeler?
Yes.
All right, next item, discussion on investment policy, staff report.
The treasurer, Mr. Harris, please. Right as you go.
I hope that's all yours and none of mine.
Yes, sir, it is. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I am pleased to come before you today to expand on our investment portfolio and the options that the city of Bristol has. I became treasurer in two thousand and ten. At that point, we were borrowing six million dollars on the tan. This year, I'm sure we're gonna hear just a little bit how the city has progressed. So this is a tweaking of what I had submitted to the Treasurers Association of Virginia to become a certified master governmental treasurer in two thousand and fourteen. Previously, we only had the option of doing CDs, and those are basically locked in at one year. So with this policy, we are adding three items. The first one is run by the state. It's the LGIP, Local Government Investment Pool. It offers two professionally managed investment portfolios that comply with the Investment of Public Funds Act. The second one is the VIP. This one is following the same format as the LGIP, but it just gives us a second choice in investing. It is wholly owned and subsidized by a bond council firm. And just a little bit of background on that, the LGIP was paying on the liquidity fund one point nine three percent today, and the VIP was paying one point nine six. So traditionally, right now, the CDs are in the range of point eight five, so I believe this is the time to move and add those to our portfolio. There is a SNAP program, and that's a management firm for bond council. We're not there at this time, but we have been in the past. And you guys weren't here then, but I was proactive in two thousand and twelve, moving forward with this for short-term bond investment, and the opportunity was just not there at the time. We will only invest in what is authorized by the Securities for Public Acts Fund, and those are listed in item number seven. They are obligation bonds, liquidity market, which are those two investments. We do have Canadian government obligations, CDs, of course, banker's executives, and commercial paper. I might add that these investment pools are rated triple A M with standard and poor. They do have full-time credit risk management, so these are not investments that are fly-by-night. They are all approved by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And the reporting will be jointly. Our CFO, Tamara Spradlin, and I have a nice working relationship. We participate under dual control. Me or the deputy treasurer in my office, or Ms. Spradlin and her designee, work together to make sure that there is dual control. So money coming in to the city is under dual control, and money going out of the city is under dual control. Do you have any questions?
Are T-bills, is that part of, buy treasury bonds, is that part of it, Ms. Harris? Could that be part of it? Because their rates are getting pretty good, okay? They're better than one point nine something you mentioned right now. They're even, I know a ten-year is three point oh seven. I don't know what a two-year is, but if, you know, I'm sure it's over, well over two right now. Is that possible?
If the management pools, if it is approved, it would be invested. I don't have specifically T-bill, U.S. Treasury obligations. They do carry the full faith, so if that were an investment on the portfolio for the day that we pop the money in, yes, it would be. It would go in there. The rate that we're, I've quoted today, that is net, our costs, there are fees involved, is four basis points, so those are the nets. So if treasury bonds were on the plate for the day, that's what we would buy.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any counsel questions or discussions?
No, these are perfect for what we want to do with our savings account for the bond payments.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a lot to consider when you talk in investment policy. I mean, obviously, the approved investment vehicles, you know, the risk associated with them, the rating of those bonds, you know, what the history's been. Somehow, you gotta intertwine all that in your analysis so that we consider all that when we, you know, look at which investment policy or vehicle to get into. And liquidity, I think CFO's gonna have to really think about liquidity of these investment vehicles. You know, how much are you gonna put in these investment vehicles? How quick can you turn them to liquid cash so that you're not tied up into a CD on a six-month, twelve-month, eighteen-month, and then you can't pull the cash out when you need it for, you know, whatever operational capital costs?
Bond payment.
Yeah, and bond payments. So there's a lot to consider, not just what investment vehicle to put the money into, but once you've got the money there, you know, how easy, how liquid is it, how hard is it to get out, you know?
We can get it out that day.
You gotta strategize.
We let them know when it's ours. We put it in.
That's why they charge you a fee. That way, you can come and go as you please.
But you mentioned we can get involved with Canada and some kind of Canadian investment, right? Is that what you said?
The, both of these funds, the LGIP and the VIP, through the Commonwealth of Virginia, the Investments Fund, that is an approved investment.
We may need to take a look at that. They're getting ready to legalize marijuana, August, in the middle of August, in the whole country. So that may be a boom up there in Canada, so, you know, you never know.
I think the Virginia investment vehicles you mentioned there, you know, do you have the detail underneath that of all the specific investment vehicles underneath that group of investments?
I don't have their names. That's the beauty of this. We have professional people who, their life is living and breathing investments. They are the ones that are studying. They are looking at the risks. They're evaluating, and they are either working for the state or working for this bond council company. And that's the beauty of this. All across the Commonwealth, treasurers are investing their money with either or both of these liquidity pools. And many treasurers do have long-term investments. Those will be one to three years. We're not quite there yet, but possibly in the future, we might be.
So they don't provide you perspectives of what they're investing in, ratios, like so much in the T-bills, so much in the foreign, you know, growth, small cap, large cap? I mean, you don't know exactly how, they don't even, I mean, not necessarily to even know the companies, just to know the asset allocation of how it's being invested.
There is asset allocation. There are financial reports. It's not like filling your money in a black hole.
Okay, because, I mean, I think...
Well, as you said, they're all triple A rated.
These two firms are triple A M.
Yeah, I think to see that, to see, you know, performance, it would be helpful to gauge those to, and then, is your point, Mr. Mayor, I think liquidity is probably a huge issue. I mean, we don't want to, well, it's great that we actually can talk about this for a change. You know, I don't want to have our money tied up to a point to where we might have to, we'd find ourselves in a struggle, or even, you know, to have to pay more, for example, to use the tan because our money's tied up over here. I mean, that seems counterproductive to me.
We can't tie it up long-term, and we gotta make, we got to make sure that, you know, we keep it at six-month increments, or I think, or something along those lines.
I can kind of maybe clear a little bit of this up. On February first, myself and all, actually, Ms. Harris and Ms. Spradlin, we all met with Bo Blevins from VIP, and I think they've even had a, while I was out with the flu, they may have had a phone conference with LGIP. I can't remember.
I did.
Okay, and so on February first, I sent you all an email with the VIP presentation, and I went ahead and just re-forwarded that to you all again to refresh your memory on it. So in regards to liquidity, one of their pool investments, it's basically called the liquidity pool. It's the one, I think, the straw in one point nine, one point nine six percent interest. It's basically available to us at any time, as long as we do the transaction before two P.M., I think, is what the requirement is, and it's right back into our city account that day. In regards to Mr. Hartley's question, they will provide perspectives for us in regards to how all that's invested. They have another option, a one-to-three-year option. It ties it up a little bit more, so you'd have to be really sure that you wanted to tie up a piece of that money for that length of time, but you have, you have that ability too, to earn a higher rate of interest on something if you want to tie it up a little bit longer.
But it makes us not as liquid, or not as able to get to the money.
Right, but there is a liquid account, and I probably would not recommend to Ms. Harris or to this council at this point to lock anything up for a period of time, from one to three years at this point. Now, putting it into the more liquid account, I think we could come up with a appropriate sum to put into that account for us to earn interest on.
Our initial investment can be tied up for a year. Not, we're not gonna have to draw on that for two years.
Right.
And then we're talking...
Yeah, so we get better rate.
About initial investment, eight hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, million dollars, they can all be tied up for a year, because you're not gonna need that money.
But we can participate in both the liquidity pool, dollar in today, dollar out tomorrow. That's very simple, and we can also lock money in, have multiple accounts.
That's smart. Catch your bets. Catch your risk.
Any other counsel questions?
Well, I will throw some caution out there, because we pulled our, our city funds down to around nine hundred thousand this year. We came within less than a million dollars, happened to pull from a tan, so...
We're not through yet.
Well, I know that.
There's thirty more days left.
I know that, and we're not, we're not through yet. You're right. So we're gonna have to be really smart as to how much we are willing to slide over and lock up like that.
And I'm waiting for that communication.
You gotta get it out of the checking account. I understand that. That's, I don't care where you put it, you put it in a sock. Don't leave it in the checking account. I have some socks available.
Before you leave at the end of June, would you mind to tell us which drawer the socks are in?
You were doing pretty good.
The dirty laundry basket.
All right, well, just, you know, the strategy's gotta be where we are today. There's gotta be the best rate of return we can get, and we gotta be liquid until we get our cash built up in a position to where we're in a better shape, then we can put a little bit more long-term, you know, investments out there. So that's what's gotta be considered when you go through it. So if y'all work together, and it's a dual thumbs up, thumbs down, and you're all comfortable, you gotta be hundred percent comfortable with it. It's gotta be very conservative, but, you know, not put any risk out there that we can't afford right now. All right, any other counsel discussion? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Quarterly financial report?
Gene, if you could pull up what I sent to you for a quick... Before we go in the quarterly financial report, I know there were discussions previously tonight about the economy and the state of the economy. It just so happened yesterday that the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond put out their national economic indicators, and I want to show you some of the things that we're seeing on a national trend in today's economy. Gene, I think if we go to page five. This is your real GDP. You can see that it's declined a little bit over the past few, it looks like quarters, I think, is how they've done that. So that has declined. If you could go on to page seven, this is your retail sales. You can see that it has declined within the past month. There was an uptick, it appears, early two thousand and seventeen, but it has declined, and then it's upticked again. If we can move on to page eight, this is your consumer spending and income. You can see that it's taken a dip at this time, and it's kind of been flat really since two thousand and sixteen. We did have one increase there, probably in late two thousand and sixteen. And then number ten, page ten, this is your sales of automobiles and light trucks. You can see it's been on a decline since early two thousand and seventeen. So I think these are some indicators of what's going on in the national economy. You can turn that off now, Gene. And that's things that I was aware of when I was in the process of preparing the budget. You have to look at the big picture of what's going on, not only in our small community, but across the nation, and what's happening. So these are some of the things that I take into account when I look at economic indicators and how we need to move forward as a city. Now, there is some good news in that economic indicator, but these are some of the things that we need to be aware of when we're dealing with our budget in the foreseeable future. We can go into the report now. I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible, although it's been a long night. This is a fund summary, and all of this is as of March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Revenues as of March thirty-first, thirty-eight point one million. Expenditures, thirty-five point eight million, leaves us a balance of two point three million. With that being said, one million of that is for our debt reserve. Eight hundred and forty-four thousand of that is for the savings from the refinancing, which leaves us roughly five hundred thousand at this point. Our solid waste disposal fund, four point eight million dollars in revenue, four point seven million expenditures, with a balance of one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And our capital projects, the revenues are five point seven, expenditures are three point one, balance of two point five. Here is a pie chart that shows where our revenue is coming from. Ms. Spradlin loves to see the blue part get bigger. That's our local revenue. So over the course of the past year, that has increased, and that's simply because of the way our mills taxes, lodging taxes, and other local taxes come into our funds. So you can see that sixty-two percent is from our local revenue sources now, twenty-nine percent is revenue from the Commonwealth, seven percent's revenue from the government, and the two percent is from other financing sources. This is our general fund expense summary as of March thirty-first. Public safety accounts for twenty-nine point two six percent of our budget. Expenses, education, fifteen point six three percent. Health and welfare and social services is fifteen point one six percent. Debt is eight point four one percent. Public works, eight point three percent, and Parks and Rec at five point seven eight, and then it continues to decrease from that point forth for transfers, government administration, judicial administration, non-departmental, and community development. Revenue report, these are numbers are as of March thirty-first as well, so sixty-three point six seven percent of the general property taxes that we have budgeted for have come in. Other local taxes are at seventy-seven percent. And the benchmark at this point's really seventy-five percent if you did it on an annualized basis. But you have to remember, some of these taxes don't come in at certain times, so you may see a little dip that may alarm you. Permits and privileged fees at forty-nine percent, fines and forfeitures at forty-six point three six percent. Remember, we have adjusted that for this upcoming year based on what we saw coming in for fines as of this year. Revenue from money and properties at sixty-eight point five percent. Charges for services is roughly at sixty percent. Charges for services is roughly 60%. Miscellaneous revenues at 46.74%. Recovered costs at 87%. State revenue, 77. Federal at 70, and other financing sources at 102%. With that being said, I know there was discussion tonight in regards to a significant tax recovery that we had in the city. That number came from Ms. Harris. There wasn't actual a number. She can't release what that specific number is, but Ms. Harris provided that to us at the finance committee meeting on last Wednesday or Thursday morning. I can't remember what day that was. With that being said, you can also see that we're not, we're on track with a lot of our revenue sources, but with that being said, a lot of our expenses are, have increased. So there's a fine line at this point as to whether or not you consider that a windfall to the city. Here's just a comparison over the past four fiscal years, three fiscal years and the current year. You can see that on our local sales and use tax, we are up as compared to where we were this time last year. Consumer utility tax is basically where we were this time last year as well. Cigarette taxes, less people are smoking, so those are down. We saw a dip, it appears in March, I believe, where, I don't believe any cigarette stamps were sold in the month of March. We anticipate that will probably pick up in April, right before the race. Lodging taxes, basically on par for what we were last year. Our restaurant and mills tax is still low. There are several factors in regards to that, and I think that's due to the number of restaurants that we have in Bristol, which is less than what it has been. However, with that being said, we are tracking to meet our restaurants and mills tax budget goal, even though it's less than 2017, but that's simply because in last year's budget, they projected less restaurant and mills tax based on the number of restaurants that had closed in the city. Here is where we can talk about troughs and how we see these trends from year to year throughout the months. And you can see our local sales and use tax, how it has trended downward. It actually didn't get quite as high as it had in the previous years, which is something that we need to take note of and figure out the source of that, because it appears that in February of previous years, we did have a peak, whether something wasn't paid by a business or something, that's something we'll have to dig into to see exactly why that didn't happen, and maybe it will show up in March. So stay tuned, or in April, I should say. Lodging taxes, as the mayor alluded to, we see a lull between November and Jan, or November and March in our lodging taxes, and you can see here where we are. We followed that trend as we have in the past three fiscal years. Restaurant and mills tax, the trend is the same, even though we're getting less in restaurant and mills taxes than what we have, our trend is the same, so that's good. It means people are still eating out. They're going to the restaurants that we do have. However, we would like to see that increase just based on having more opportunities for people in the city of Bristol to go out and enjoy their Friday and Saturday nights. Once again, cigarette tax, I mentioned that just a second ago, where the stamps were not sold in March, but we anticipate that increasing in April. Admission tax, it's following the line, just as it always has in the past. I'm not anticipating, it's down a little bit, but I think we will see that as the weather turns, we'll see that change here shortly. Expenditure update, overtime, police departments at 91.95%. That's being offset by vacancy savings. The fire department's currently over by 22%, but that's also being offset by vacancy savings. Our inmate housing and medical supplemental appropriation of 140,000 from the public service corporation taxes and bank stock. So with the expenditure savings within the department, they will be within budget, at least what we're projecting, barring any unforeseen circumstance as of June 30th. And Clear Creek, you can see there's a deficit at the moment, but based on what we had this past winter, I would expect that, and that's basically where we were at this time last year. And at, by the time they closed in June, I think they were $6,000, they were only at a $6,000 deficit at that time when we closed in June. Once again, we'll just talk about the tax anticipation note simply because I think that is a bit of good news for the city. You can basically see a $16 million swing, almost $17 million swing, between fiscal year 13, 14, and our cash balance as of March 31st of 2018. We do not anticipate having to hit the tax anticipation note this spring, based on where we stand, but as we all know, anything can happen, and if we do not hit that, we will, it'll be the first time that we've not hit that tan since '16 and '17. And that's the financial update.
All right, thank you. Any counsel discussion on the finances?
Please, no.
All right. What's counsel's pleasure on the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve, Mr. Fleener.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hartley. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Fleener.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Lom Power.
Yes. See, it's things that Timmy Page is on. Pick up on item C, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. Got Michael Pollard? I've got to ask you, Michael, is that, is that your signature down there where Nancy Marney's name is?
Yes, she didn't come in.
Oh, okay.
So he forged the signature?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm detecting here. That kind of negates, that kind of negates your podium time, I think.
Sergeant Crawford?
Sergeant Crawford? I'll try to keep this very brief because we have been here a very long time today, even though I do have three topics to cover quickly. Excuse me, my name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. First, for agenda item six, there was a typo at the top of page four of the proposal. It's just a grammatical issue. The word principal LE versus the word principal AL, meaning a, the financial term rather than more of a general term of principles.
We all have school on our mind. Yeah, not, not now, we don't know.
Also, I would wonder if, and I know this isn't a time to get answers, but we can ask questions, and that's, I would wonder if Ms. Harris would be able to answer if there are any required minimum balances in those investment accounts. I know a lot of times when you establish an account, you need to maintain a minimum balance, and that could potentially give us issues, even if we can withdraw quickly if we have to maintain minimum balances once the accounts are established. Then, and for the consent agenda sections 8.5 to 8.7, I would like to see the costs to be listed, just so that we know how much those events are costing us in terms of overtime, anything that's not being reimbursed to the city. And if we are being reimbursed, then great, but that way we, that could be noted as well so that we have all the facts and figures before us. And then my general comments, I would like to express my appreciation for the document, documentation that was attached to the agenda material online. There was a lot of information here, such as the ones that I did comment about. I wouldn't have had that information available to comment on if it had not been attached to the agenda, so I really appreciate that. It looks like Superintendent Paragon has left now, but I appreciate his coming back to clarify his positions, even though he doesn't agree with you on a great many things. He was willing to express his positions to clarify his points. And I also appreciate this counsel working hard in this budget to try to make both ends meet, both for now, and looking forward to the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's, that's all.
That's all.
So with that said, we'll adjourn the May 22nd, 2018 City Council.
Thank you.
All right.